Order with the clerk, call the roll please and establish a forum.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shenier.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here, thank you very much. If we could, all who can rise and ask Councilmember Laloe to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon to the members of the public and colleagues and staff. We've got a very busy agenda today. Let us begin with the consent calendar. Are there items that members want to either be heard separately or to comment on? I know I have a quick comment on item seventeen. Is there any other?
And Mayor.
Any other item?
And Mayor, I have a couple of items to read into the record, some agenda changes. Would you like those now?
Why don't we do that first, then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Perfect, thank you. On the consent calendar, item number three, there's a correction to page nine of the report. City staff would like to remove the third parcel listed on Exhibit A of the city council resolution described as Twenty-Fourth Street and Sixty-Eighth Avenue. Assesses parcel number zero four seven, zero zero one four, zero one one in District Eight, and is not being surplused. No other amendments are being made to that resolution. Item number twenty-six on the agenda, adjustments to the citywide salary schedule, et cetera, is being postponed. We anticipate hearing that on May, on May fourth. And then there are two public hearing items, twenty-three and twenty-four, that staff has let me know that councilmembers wish to continue to May fourth. And for both of those, I need a motion.
On twenty-three though, and I think there's somebody from Public Works on the line. What we want to do is just extend the Reggae Alley piece of it and let the rest go. But I believe somebody's here from Public Works to read that into the record, and I'm happy to move that.
Are you moving the continuation of the item?
I'm moving the continuation of a piece of the item. Jennifer, do you want to help me on that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the item calls for sixty-four alleys and streets, and the correction is to make it sixty-three alleys and streets. We are removing Reggae Alley from the list that was presented on the agenda.
And we'll continue Reggae Alley to May fourth. And that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any public testimony on item twenty-three?
I'm checking on that now. We have no public testimony on item twenty-three.
All right, even though it's out of order, I think we, you know, a little out of order, we can dispense with the item. Let's call the roll on item twenty-three.
Okay, and Vice Merchantier, did you open and close the public hearing?
I did, but we're voting to continue the one, we're leaving it as is except pulling out one alley, which is Reggae Alley, and continuing that to the Fourth of May. So that's the motion.
A point of clarification, does that mean you want to entertain the rest of the alleys tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll leave sixty-three of them as is on consent. We're taking one alley out and moving it.
It's not on consent, Jay, that's the problem.
It's a public hearing.
Not consent, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
So I'll open and close, I'll open and close the public hearing for all but Reggae Alley and move to continue Reggae Alley until May fourth and pass the rest. How's that?
That's it, seconded by Councilmember Gata.
And then I'd like the city attorney to weigh in because we would need to renotice that one alley as if you significantly changed that agenda item.
Okay, we can continue with the motion and the vote as taken by the council. And if we need to renotice it, we'll renotice it.
Okay, so it's all been approved by the city attorney in form here. Let's call the roll. Item twenty-three is amended.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Shenier, can I just ask you one quick question? Are you, are you just removing the item that might be controversial and we're not anticipating anybody calling in a little later in the meeting to try to participate in the item?
I've talked to most of the people who live on the block who have a problem with this, and they know we're doing, we're trying to get them all together. So I don't see anyone calling.
Okay, the remaining items aren't controversial.
No.
Okay, all right, then yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Merchantier.
Aye, and thank you.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
And then lastly, item, item twenty-four, which is also a public hearing, it's my understanding that the council member would like to continue that item to May fourth.
Okay, Councilmember Laloe will take your motion on item twenty-four.
Motion to move this item to May fourth.
Okay, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ashby. Let's call the roll on the continuance.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Merchantier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Okay, that item is continued. Now back to the consent calendar. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for for all of that. Now let's ask, are there any items on the consent calendar that members want to hear separately or comment on? Councilmember Valenzuela, I think you were, you were up, yes.
Yes, thank you, and I would like to pull item five and item six, please.
For a separate discussion?
Yes.
Five and what, I'm sorry?
Five and six.
Okay. Why not, before we get to five and six, I would just like to make a comment, I could dispense with this, on item seventeen, which is the update on our 2021 climate implementation work plan. I want to talk about it because tomorrow's Earth Day in Sacramento and in California and in the country, and I think it is really important to acknowledge the leadership of our Climate Commission, chaired by Anne Stausfall and Jennifer Venema and Julia Burrows and many of your staffs, who are working really hard to take your charge from several months ago and to ensure that Sacramento is on the forefront of the climate change battle. Let's briefly review. I mean, we declared we're going to be carbon neutral by no later than 2045. We declared a climate emergency in December of 2019. We plan to have our new construction electrification ordinance to the city council in May. The Environmental Justice Collaborative Governance Committee is underway, community-led. The Slow Streets Pilots, kicked one off with Councilmember Valenzuela a month or so ago, is off and running, and we're learning as we go. The city just got a $1.8 million CEC grant, Energy Commission grant, for city charging stations and infrastructure. We've got a work plan for retrofits of existing buildings, and now we've got a lot more work to do on that. We've got a green jobs focus. Look what we did with the CARES funding and the mobility center. And so, we got a long way to go, but I just want to acknowledge that on Earth Day 2021, thanks to our constituents who have said climate must be among our core priorities here in this city, we're off to a pretty good start. So I just wanted to say thank you. Let us now go back to, why don't we take, why don't we take a motion on the consent calendar on items other than five, other than five and six?
I'll move consent.
Mr. Mayor, item number three also had some questions on that.
Do you want to ask them now, Councilmember Laloe?
If I may.
Go.
Considering the majority of the list of the surplus happens to fall, I think almost ninety-nine percent happen to fall into my district, I wanted to know what the procedure or processes are and, you know, to be mindful of where these properties are and what we should make them available for. So again, if I can have a little bit of information on that, or is this something that can we pull and add it to the consent for our next meeting? I'll leave it up to the experienced ones.
So, if I can make a suggestion, Mayor?
Please.
Councilmember Laloe, there is a successor agency committee, which I actually am chairing, been doing it for the last couple of years, and chaired our successor agency in the, since the demise of redevelopment. Leslie Fritchy is a fabulous staff person who knows more about the goings-on of the committee than the members of the committee themselves. So my suggestion would be just to contact Leslie, and she could walk you through the process that's used, and then if you have specific thoughts on individual pieces of land or buildings as well.
When a list like this comes up, can we put on limitations or certain businesses that cannot purchase these properties?
Leslie, do you want?
Yes, so.
Because we don't own them as the city, so, but go ahead, Leslie.
Yes, hi, Councilmember Laloe. So with this, pardon me?
How are you?
Fine, sir, how are you? And these properties and the reason they are declared surplus in the action before you tonight is a necessary step to comply with the Surplus Land Act, and that is a new requirement. Previously, the redevelopment agency successor properties could be sold at market value or provided. But as of January first of this year, those properties are now subject to the State Surplus Land Act, which means they first need to be noticed, and provide, and housing developers provided the opportunity to submit proposals for their use as the first approach. If you would like more of a briefing, we certainly could pull this item, and I could talk about it in more detail with you and Danielle, and we can put it on a subsequent agenda if you would be more comfortable with that. There's not necessarily a time sensitivity to this, and we could move, move it in that regard if you prefer.
If that's okay with my colleagues, I would, I would like to do that, just a little bit more information on this. Make sure we're on the right path for housing and affordability.
Let us, Councilmember Laloe moves to continue. Item three seconded by Councilmember Jennings. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Mayor, did my, hey, Vang, Councilmember Vang had a comment, though I think before we were taking the.
Oh, on item three, Councilmember Vang, I'm sorry.
Actually, I was just gonna make a comment. I didn't want to pull any more agenda off consent and create more work for you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief comment really quick on some of those items.
Let's just take this vote to continue this item, then I'll get, then I'll get to your comment, okay?
Sounds great.
Call the roll, go, go.
So on item number three, motion by Laloe, seconded by Jennings, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Merchantier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, okay, Councilmember Vang.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, didn't want to pull items off the, off the calendar, the agenda, but one, you know, for item one and two, they're both based on cannabis, and, you know, I think it's really great that the city of Sacramento is getting a go-biz grant to really support our core members and our equity program. I also see on item two that there is a limit on cannabis delivery operations as well, and as I was reading our agenda packet actually this weekend, I was just thinking, just, you know, how, how we have these items on consent, and I've just been really concerned overall on just the way that the core program or our program is currently operating in the city of Sacramento. And I say this because, you know, I know that there are some proposed moratoriums, but there hasn't been really a holistic approach at really looking at how, and in what ways are we supporting our minority-owned businesses, and especially those that are part of the core program. And so, one, I just definitely want to say, I do appreciate that there is going to be an extensive kind of review analysis of just cannabis overall and cannabis, the core program, so I really appreciate staff's work on that. Because what I'm also seeing that we're doing things in segment, like there's D six, D two, and then there's this grant, and I, I, you know, really urge us to really take a holistic approach. We're looking at just cannabis overall in the city of Sacramento, and making sure that as we are moving forward and we're talking about equity, that we're also not, you know, creating policy or ordinance or caps in a way that could be harmful for the entrepreneurs and minority-owned businesses that are really trying to, you know, begin their business. So I just wanted to make that comment as well, because it seems kind of segmented and not, not really a holistic approach, and just wanted to make that comment. But, you know, I appreciate, I'm really glad that we're going to get this cannabis grant, and look forward to ensuring that, you know, we get these dollars to our communities that needed, that needed the most. So those are my comments.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so if we can go back now to, love a motion on the consent calendar for all but items five and six. I think would be appropriate, given all the comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, this item two is one specific to District Six here, one that we've worked a lot on, but I understand Councilmember Vang's point, and I'd be glad to, you know, put this one off for a week, so, you know, so he kind of gets the background on how we've accomplished this. Because it is specific to an area that is, that has a lot of, a lot of folks that have worked on a kind of a guiding principles for the last three to four years. So if that's okay with our maker of the motion, I, I'll go ahead and pull this off for a week, and then that way we can have that conversation. But I do want to say that, that, you know, it's taken us a long time to get to where we're at on a lot of these, and we're glad to have that conversation.
So the appropriate motion is to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of five and six, and including a continuance for one week of item two. Who wants to make that motion?
I made the motion, Mayor. I'll take the change.
Okay, very good. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Gara, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
I'm sorry, just, Madam Clerk, do we, a one-week continuance, is, is that work? Is there a meeting?
We do not have a meeting next week. It'd have to be the meeting of May fourth.
Yeah, it's going to be May fourth.
You caught me.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing, I, I mean, I was gonna, you know, I, I don't, I think for me, I wasn't gonna vote against it. It was just that I, I really hope that, you know, as we're moving forward and looking at the policy in D two or D six, or it could be in D eight, that we do it in uniform. I think that's really important citywide. So I did just want to give a shout out to staff because they are going to be doing a citywide analysis. And so I just wanted to make that comment, because I think that as we move forward, we just have to make sure that we look at this, we look at this citywide, and so.
So, I don't want to complicate this. Councilmember Harris, would you amend your motion then to include item two in the passage for tonight? Because I think Councilmember Vang said she was okay with that. So you don't need to continue that, Councilmember Gara, although your courtesy is noted. So.
Yes, Mayor, I, I'm easy. I'll go whatever way we need to go here.
Okay, good. So, and then the second by Councilman Gara to pass your item two and not continue it, you're okay with that change? Eric?
Hello, yes, yeah, sorry, it froze here a little bit here.
That's okay. So now let's call the roll on the consent calendar. It's everything except items five and six. Please proceed.
Mayor Steinberg, I have two callers on the consent calendar. May we take those now?
Of course.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? May we have our first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you much. This is Nasser Azimi. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak. I am jumping on this opportunity to express my limited opposition to consent calendar item number two, looking to limit the number of delivery permits. And the reason my opposition is limited is that it seems to be proposed for storefront cannabis operations as well. I am the president of Cantinas Group, and we operate Cantinas Cannabis in District Six on Power and Road. And in that context, we are about four months new and growing at a very nice rapid pace. And recently, we've had significant demand placed upon us for storefront customers to receive their orders via delivery. And in that sense, we believe limiting our ability to deliver products to our existing storefront customers would honestly have a significant competitive disadvantage for us. And quite frankly, it would actually increase traffic into District Six if this limitation is placed upon us. If as an example, five customers that currently come to the storefront would like to receive a delivery, and they're forced to come to District Six as opposed to receiving a single-driver delivery, that definitely would increase traffic into District Six. Just to back up a little bit, I believe the whole proposal is based on evaluation of over-concentration and also displacing non-cannabis businesses. Since we are an existing operation, neither one of those would realistically apply.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Absolutely. I appreciate the time and would appreciate and respectfully request that you carve out this piece of the proposal and policy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers, so the motion on the table is by Councilmember Harris and seconded by Councilmember Gara.
However, however, I think the witness testimony has prompted Councilmember Gara maybe to think about item two once again. So we're gonna get through this, I promise.
We'll get through this consent, yeah, thank you.
Go, go, what do you want to do, Eric?
If we could, let's go ahead and just move it back to the May fourth meeting so that we can answer the questions that came forward, so.
So Jeff Harris with a second by Councilmember Gara, it's the consent calendar with the exception of five and six, and number two will be continued one week. You're good with that, Jeff?
Like I said, Mayor, I'm easy.
Okay, and Councilman Gara seconded, now let's call the roll, please. Thank you.
And to reiterate, by Harris, seconded by Gara, all items except five and six. Item number two is continued to May fourth, not next week, and we've already had a separate vote on item number three.
That's what I, that's exactly, exactly what you said. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Reels this time, yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Sure.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Merchantier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
About that item two, yes, I say yes. Very good, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and courtesy. Okay, now let's go to item five, Councilmember Valenzuela, for a separate consideration of five and six. Let's start with five.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm coming back two weeks after initially bringing this up nicely on Earth Week to ask council to approve direction to the city treasurer not to invest in single-name fossil fuel funds on a go-forward basis. This would expire about nineteen million dollars in single-name fossil fuel investments we currently hold in our portfolio over the next couple of years. And without objection, I'd like to move that item with that direction to the treasurer.
Okay, is there a second?
So Mayor, just a comment, yeah, so Angela seconded. You know, I raised an objection last time when Katie brought this up, but I've subsequently spoken with Mr. Colville about the repercussions to his investment portfolio, and, you know, we still have ETFs, and I find this acceptable, so I will be in support.
Okay, any public testimony on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have no callers on item five.
Okay, then let's call the roll on item five, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Mayor, add it to your climate control achievement list, yes.
Good, exactly.
Councilmember Laloe.
A healthy and clear yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
With thanks to Mr. Colville, yes.
Vice Merchantier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Vang.
I just want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Valenzuela for her leadership on this, and yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. Very good, that passes now, no, I did nothing. Let's go with item six, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll begin to quickly bring in, we've been emailing with planning staff who I think are on the call. This is our report on how we're doing on building housing to meet different levels of affordability. So I saw Matt pop onto the screen there, so I'll ask you, Matt, I noticed in the chart that it's not broken out, very low to extremely low income, so could you give us an update on how we're doing on extremely low-income units in the city?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Matt Hurdle, acting long-range planning manager of Community Development. So what you'll see in this report is actually some really encouraging news for this year. This is our best housing production year in fifteen years, actually, which is wonderful. In addition, as the councilmember mentioned, it is our best year for affordable housing and regulated affordable housing in some time. We have, in terms of the total breakout for regulated affordable housing, we have almost a thousand units issued building permits in 2020, which includes three hundred and twelve extremely, units that are affordable to extremely low-income individuals, which is about thirty percent of that total number. So we're very excited about that now. I know that LaShel Dozier, Executive Director of S.H.A., is also available for questions on that.
Thank you so much for that, and I do want to commend, and that's what is hard with these things, is like, I want to commend the fact that, like, there's a clear trajectory and momentum shift happening, while also noting that in the 2013 renet, it says we need almost five thousand very low-income units, and so we still have such a long way to go. And I couldn't let this motion pass before noting that while we're making so much project, just that need to ramp really fast on very low and extremely low-income units, and to really look at other policies, including what's in the housing element this year, because we are doing great, but we still have so much to do. And I'm sure LaShel could talk about that as well, if we're going to meet the need in the community right now. And I wanted to highlight this report and the work that staff has done, which has been commendable and really exciting, and just our call to action as a council to continue to figure out how to increase production at a much faster rate than we've been able to, even with all this progress. I don't know, LaShel, if you'd like to add anything to that.
I just really want to say thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for pointing this out. There has been a lot of hard work. Those three hundred and twelve units, the majority of those came in two projects, which was Mirasol Village and La Mancha, so a lot of great work going on.
Mayor, just a quick comment.
Yes.
Probably the biggest reason that we can continue this roll is because of our thirty-one and a half million dollar trust fund, housing trust fund. So, you know, it's recent, it's about resources. If you're going to subsidize housing, you've got to do it with money. We've allocated quite a substantial sum to that regard, and so I think that our future looks certainly brighter than it has for the last two decades.
And you know, as far as I'm concerned, that thirty-one million dollars is a great start, but only a start. You've got to build that fund up.
Well, and I definitely think, before I move the item, that it is about investment a hundred percent, but it's also about policy. And, and this council's heard me talk about inclusionary zoning before and other policies that I really want to bring back into, into conversation, because if we're just trying to subsidize it all the way, then we'll frankly never get to scale of where we need to be. But with that, I'll move this report, and thank you, staff, for indulging this type of conversation.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded by somebody, I'm sure.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Vang. No public testimony on this item, I presume? Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Merchantier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, and that, members, concludes the consent calendar. Thank you for your patience. Very good. Let's move now to the public hearings and begin with item eighteen. Thank you for your patience. Very good. Let's move now to the public hearings and begin with item eighteen.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers. My name is Mary Jean Rodriguez with the Finance Department. The item before you this evening is the public hearing for the North Natomas Public Facilities Land Acquisition Fee Upstate. This fee is collected at building permit to provide funding for acquisition of public land in the North Natomas area. The fees are dated each year based on the average of the appraised land values for the prior three years. The updates and appraisals were halted in 2009 due to the building restriction in North Natomas. The annual appraisal process was restarted in 2017, and the public land acquisition value has increased by thirty-five point zero six percent from 2009, from one hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred six dollars per acre to two hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars per acre. So the increase is mostly attributed to higher residential land values. As such, a thirty-five point fifty-four percent increase in the fee is being proposed. The fee increase would be effective July 1 of 2021. The fee includes three percent administration fee to pay for the city's time and expense in acquiring the land and managing the program. There's a five percent land value contingency. The staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt a resolution increasing the public facilities land acquisition fee for the North Natomas Land Acquisition Program. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mary Jean. Mayor, are you okay if I take this from here?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you, appreciate.
Just want to thank Mary Jean, she's a really hard worker. If you haven't met her before, that is a wonderful city employee right there, and Sherri Smith, too. These North Natomas finance plans can be really complicated. Mayor, I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move staff's recommendation forward on the North Natomas Public Facilities Land Acquisition Fee Upstate.
That's good. Great work. Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any testimony on the item?
I have no callers on this item.
Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Very good. Good work. Item nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Sean DeCoursey, Associate Preservation Planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm pleased to present a landmark nomination for the Nisei VFW Hall at fifteen fifteen Fourth Street. This property was originally built as a restaurant called The Flower Garden by African-American entrepreneur Felix Flowers. The building including meeting rooms for African-American fraternal and social clubs. Today, the building is more closely associated with the rich ethnic heritage of Japanese-Americans. In the mid-twentieth century, Nisei, who are children of Japanese-born American immigrants, were returning to Sacramento from internment and service in the United States Army following World War II. Community elders saw the need to establish a social hall dedicated for use by this growing population. The building they chose at fifteen fifteen Fourth Street in the heart of Sacramento's former Japan Town represents the growth of this ethnic community following the Second World War. The Preservation Commission reviewed this nomination at their meeting in December and unanimously recommended the city council pass a motion listing the property on the Sacramento Register under criteria one for its historic association with Sacramento's Japanese-American community. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions from the council.
Thanks, and Mayor, I believe we have Kent Nakashima, who's the commander for the VFW post as well. That's okay, sir.
Commander Nakashima, are you here? How are you doing, Commander Nakashima? Welcome.
I'm doing fine. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for allowing me to present my topic of this building. What was not brought up is originally, the building was going to be around Southside Park. And the opportunity to purchase this building came and we jumped on it, because it is in the heart of Japan Town. Actually, it was. Now, with the, back in the fifties with the Capitol Mall development, Japan Town was destroyed. It was replaced. And this building, along with this book, are the only remnants of Japan Town. So making this a landmark would be a start for the Japanese-American community to allow people to see what Japan Town was like. We do have a wall with pictures, and we hope to expand on that. So with that, I hope you give support for this ordinance. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Is there any, go ahead.
I was actually gonna ask if you wanted to do public comment first, but I can wait.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, gonna see if we have any public testimony on the item.
Mr. Mayor, I have no callers on this item.
Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Kent, for joining us today and for giving myself and my chief of staff a tour of your building just a couple of weekends ago. If you haven't been there today, it's a remarkable building, really full of memories and mementos from generations of Japanese-American veterans who've served our country and our community. You know, we recently declared as a council that we want to stand together against anti-Asian hate and continue to be vigilant to protect the safety of our Asian community. But we must too recognize that anti-Asian sentiments are not a new phenomenon and unfortunately a part of our history. And remembering that discrimination, the internment, the lack of opportunity for the Japanese community is a really important part of keeping those lessons alive, so we're not doomed to repeat them. Then in particular, this building, as Kent just mentioned, is literally the last building of Old Japan Town that was formerly of the Old West End. And it really serves as a necessary community hub and a symbol of resilience and a real tribute to the Japanese-American soldiers like Kent, who've contributed a lot to Sacramento and to the United States. So for me, this resolution is a lot more than just a landmark dedication. It's also a commitment from my office and our city to continue to support the VFW post and the people who rely on it for really important, important community purposes. So with that, I really want to thank Carson and Sean, as well as Bill Berg, for their work on bringing this forward and proudly open and close the public hearing and move approval of making fifteen fifteen Fourth Street a historical landmark. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, is there a second? Is there anybody else here?
Absolutely, absolutely, Mayor. I'd be pleased to second that motion.
Okay, let us call the roll then, please.
Well, Mayor, I was just gonna make a quick comment. I was gonna thank you, but no worries.
Oh, go, no, no, you go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm still, I know what I need to do to do better about who has their hand raised. Go ahead.
I can pull my, I can pull my second back.
No, I think it's great that you seconded, Councilmember Jennings. I just wanted to make a few comments and second it, but I think it's great that you seconded. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Nakashima just for sharing a really important part of our Asian-American history, and I would say our Sacramento history and our California history. I think, as you heard earlier from the presenter, this is really significant, because it was founded to be really a gathering place for Japanese-American and their communities after they were returning home to Sacramento after the internment camp. And so I'm really happy that we're acknowledging this as part of our history, our Sacramento history. And thank you, Councilwoman Valenzuela, for making the motion. So just wanted to make that comment, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, proudly. Very good. That passes again unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, Kent.
Wonderful. Let us now move to item twenty.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Danny Abis, and the project planner for this proposed Maverick store at Granite Regional Park. The applicant is requesting to rezone a longtime vacant site at the northeast corner of Power and Road and Fourteenth Avenue, immediately west of Granite Regional Park, to facilitate the construction and operation of a six-thousand-square-foot store with five vehicle fueling pumps. The Planning and Design Commission unanimously recommended that the council adopt the rezoning ordinance and approve the project. A member of the commission encouraged Maverick to adopt its strategy for the donation of unsold edible food. In response, Maverick conducted research and committed to work with a nonprofit, Feeding America, to achieve this. Planning staff supports the project, as it would be expected to provide many amenities to the area, including fresh food services, restroom facilities, roadway improvements, electric vehicle charging stations, covered outdoor dining, and a children's playlot. That concludes the presentation. City staff and applicants are available if any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Guerra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming there's no public comment?
That's accurate. There's no public comment calls on this item.
Great, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and move this item. I do want to send some special thank yous to Dane Domich, Wendy Hoyt, and the folks at the Power and Alliance as well, particularly reaching out to Dane Domich, who for, for a long time, has been advocating for the power in area. Back when it was a two-lane road, and I think, Mr. Steinberg, you were, Mr. Mayor, you were involved in the development of that area. This is a great location, because many folks, we have about two to three thousand families who go on a weekend there, and there's no public restrooms available. There's very places, very few people for workers. And the property owner was willing to start looking at how we create electrification as available for their facility, so there'll be charging stations there. So with that, I'd like to move the item and thank the good work of Adamic Speravich for all their efforts.
Second?
Councilmember, does that include opening and closing the public hearing?
And I'll move to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Thank you. And I had a second by Councilmember Harris.
Yes, let's call the roll, please.
That was a second by Councilmember Harris, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Looks like a great project, Eric. Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Thank you. It passes unanimously. Good, great to see D six continuing to build. Congratulations. So we now move to item twenty-one, which I could have added is another move forward, depending on what the council does on our climate change agenda. So let's take this one on. Go ahead, item twenty-one.
Good evening. I'm Helen Self, Community Development Department, Long Range Planning, and please bear with me while I share my screen. And then get the thing to open up. Uh-oh.
It's good.
It's good, okay. Just trying to get the whole, the whole thing. Okay. There we go. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, this evening, we're requesting that city council pass an ordinance that will facilitate the transition from fossil fuel vehicles to clean, zero-emission vehicles in support of Sacramento's climate goals. The Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Ordinance will increase requirements for EV charging infrastructure and provide parking incentives for electric vehicle charging stations and zero-emission car sharing in new development. We've developed this ordinance in response to council direction. The city has made a series of commitments to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions and achieve carbon neutrality by 2045, and this ordinance is an important step in implementing these commitments. The standards and incentives in the EV charging infrastructure ordinance were part of a comprehensive new building electrification ordinance intended to implement the direction from city council, which was based on a recommendation from the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change Final Report. On March 2, the Law and Legislation Committee directed staff to split the new building electrification ordinance and move the EV charging standards forward to city council as a separate ordinance. So now we have two separate electrification ordinances pending. The revised new building electrification ordinance will be presented to the Law and Legislation Committee on May 4 prior to bringing it to city council, but this is the first piece here tonight. The EV charging infrastructure ordinance includes local amendments to the California Building Standards Code that would live in Title 15 of Sacramento City Code. The amendments to Title 15 apply to new, non-residential, new multi-unit dwellings, hotels, and motels, and would require twenty percent EV-capable charging spaces and at least one installed operational Level 2 EV charger. The changes to Title 17 are incentives that would become effective in thirty days. These include parking standards reductions to encourage zero-emission car sharing and EV chargers. The ordinance would require twenty percent of the parking spaces in new, non-residential, and multifamily development to be EV-capable, as shown here. EV-capable means that the electrical conduit or raceway that protects electrical wiring, as well as adequate panel capacity, is installed to accommodate a future dedicated branch circuit so that an EV charging station can be installed in the future without ripping out pavement or having to replace the electrical panel. The ordinance would also require at least one electric vehicle, one Level 2 EV charger. These new standards would exceed the current requirements of the California Building Standards Code for EV charging infrastructure. In summary, the effective dates for the EV charging infrastructure ordinance align with the effective dates for the ordinance that will provide electrification standards for new buildings. These dates allow sufficient time for the development community to adequately plan for the new mandate and align with the effective dates of the 2022 and 2025 California Building Standards Code cycles. Together, they provide a balanced package that is cost-effective for developers and prevents the need for future expensive retrofits. Vehicles are responsible for more than half of the greenhouse gas emissions in Sacramento's inventory. This ordinance is a climate action that the city can take to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation while improving air quality. This ordinance will also help Sacramento prepare for a future when the internal combustion engine may not be available for, may not be available due to future state regulations that would require a hundred percent of in-state sales of new passenger cars and trucks to be zero emission by 2035. Next steps after tonight's action, staff will be bringing the revised new building electrification ordinance to the Law and Legislation Committee on May 4 and then to council in late May or early June. And then we'll kick off an eighteen-month effort to develop a pathway to address the electrification of existing buildings. And then this summer, we also anticipate a real draft climate action and adaptation plan. This concludes my presentation. Matt, Jennifer Venema, and staff from the Building Division and others are also available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have public testimony on the item?
I have no callers on item twenty-one.
Okay, Jennifer Venema, anything you want to add, or?
No, thank you, Mayor and Council. Great presentation. We're happy to address any questions. Very excited to move this forward.
Okay, I have councilmembers Guerra- Okay, I have council members Gata and Harris, who are in the queue. Go ahead, Councilmember Gata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I do want to thank Jennifer Venema and also all of our great city team who've been leading this effort in planning for, you know, our ambitious goals here. But just like the previous item, when we get ahead of this and do the early planning, even in a place like a gas station right now that we approved earlier, we can drive the issue, no pun intended, for getting more electric vehicles and the infrastructure needed. So I want to open and close the public hearing and move the item here. This is, I think, a good example, the easy part of our effort that we were moving on, to try to get ahead of the infrastructure needs we're going to need if we're going to reduce the emissions for mobile sources. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and glad to move the item.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm happy to second.
Go ahead, and you're up in the queue, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, thank you. Jennifer, thanks for your hard work on this. I appreciate it. This is a very important thing to move forward, and I'd have to say, I think this is the first staff report that actually anticipated an absence of internal combustion engines from our state. That's rather exciting. I'm here to tell you, this is my eighth year driving all-electric, and once you get rid of your internal combustion engine, it will set you free. I kid you not, every time I get in my EV, I get a great big grin because it's the best car I've ever owned, and it's guilt-free. It's a great way to go. Fifty-three to 58% of our emissions in our area are due to mobility. We can make a big dent in our emissions and climate change by moving with this ordinance and moving forward with other recommendations of the Climate Commission. This is a great thing, and I'm happy to second.
Okay, anybody else? Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, item twenty-two.
Good evening, Council. Give me one moment here. Please let me know if there are any issues viewing my screen. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Tessa St. John. I'm a program manager from the Finance Department. The item before you is an ordinance to strengthen the city code regulating professional massage practitioners and businesses. For some background, in 2018, there were 47 police investigations at massage locations, resulting in 37 arrests. In 2019, based on recognition of the loopholes in the current ordinance, staff presented at the Law and Legislation Committee information gathered from police, code enforcement, other communities and government agencies, the California Massage Therapy Council, stakeholders and victim support organizations. And the Law and Legislation Committee directed ordinance revisions based on best practices of other cities and the California Massage Therapy Council. This item has been over two years in the making, but we do want to acknowledge that it is now coming before this council at a time that could appear insensitive or appear to target the Asian and Asian-American community, which is certainly far from the intent of the city or city staff who sincerely want to contribute to the safety and well-being of our community, in particular those who might be victims of sex trafficking, and as well as the members of the massage therapy profession. The proposed ordinance changes three sections of the Sacramento City Code, including removing massage regulations from the Adult Related Establishment Chapter, strengthening the chapter regulating professional massage practitioners and businesses, and amending terminology in Title 17 to maintain consistent language. Staff recognizes massage practice as a valuable public health service. However, there has been a continued issue of massage businesses operating as fronts for prostitution and human trafficking, which is a threat to public welfare and undermines the work of legitimate providers. Currently, the city code prescribes a somatic practitioner and an establishment permit. The establishment permit was designed to regulate the operation of massage businesses. However, exemptions to the city code have resulted in only three businesses currently having permits issued. Without a permit in place, the city has struggled to regulate and close establishments conducting unlawful activity. The proposed ordinance will update the language from somatic to massage and retain the massage practitioner permit, which permits an individual to conduct therapeutic massage. In addition, the changes will require all massage businesses to obtain a City of Sacramento special business permit. Requiring a business permit will place responsibility on operation on the business owner. The ordinance includes expanded operational standards based on recommended best practices that prohibit conditions and behaviors that may be linked to prostitution and human trafficking. Examples include requiring adequate outdoor lighting, requiring appropriate attire, including no transparent clothing that exposes underwear or nudity, requiring visibility into massage business lobbies, and prohibiting residing on-site at commercial massage businesses. Existing Title 17 home occupation regulations allow massage therapists to operate in office in their home, but similar to a physician, they cannot see clients in their homes, and the proposed ordinance does not change this. Over the last two years, staff has held stakeholder meetings with massage therapists, staff from local nonprofits, neighborhood associations, and community activists. The ordinance has received letters of support from a variety of local community organizations who are committed to helping address the issues of human trafficking. To address problem locations and close loopholes, staff researched best practices of many local jurisdictions in California and modeled recommendations after successful implementations. Many of these recommendations mirror the practice of Sacramento County. In addition, staff worked with the California Massage Therapy Council, which regulates massage therapists at the state level. They have produced industry best practices, and many of those recommendations are part of this new ordinance. Closing existing loopholes and requiring a permit for all businesses and expanding operational standards will allow the Police Department and/or code enforcement the ability to issue violations based on the presence of these conditions without relying entirely on costly undercover stings, criminal investigations, and legal action. Police action may result in arrests of the women working at the locations, who may be victims themselves. These changes will help the city hold the business owners responsible. Business permits can be suspended or revoked based on violations. In addition, if a permit is revoked, the city may prohibit any massage business from operating at that location for up to two years. This is important to stop the cycle of problem locations where ownership or name changes occur, but the illegal activity continues. Staff is also recommending changes to the permit fees to help offset the cost of the program, including biennial site inspections. The proposed cost of the establishment permit is lower than the current fee. However, with the changes, fewer businesses will be exempt. To minimize the impact, the term of the permit is increased to two years, and proposed fees are tiered to keep them proportionate to business size. The fee structure was not developed to cover the cost of all investigation and enforcement activities. We are expecting that administrative penalties will help offset additional enforcement costs. However, not all enforcement action results in penalties or recovered revenue. So staff will continue to monitor the program to assess cost recovery. In summary, staff recommends the council conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion, pass a motion that this action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, adopt the ordinance amending chapters of the Sacramento City Code, and adopt a resolution to set permit fees. That concludes my presentation. I am available to answer questions. I'm also joined by other Finance Department staff, members of code enforcement, and the Police Department. Thank you.
But thank you for the presentation. I know we have nine or 10 people who are signed up to give public testimony. Why don't we hear from the public first, and then I'll turn it to the council members?
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
All right, thank you. As was brought up in the beginning, I think this is a very untimely law targeting a mostly Asian community. And under the guise of sex trafficking, actually addressing prostitution as a legal issue and transitioning that into a code issue, but really not establishing who's a victim or who is a predator, who is a sex trafficker, and just using like a NIMBYism of we'll shut down the business and attack the financial source of income for the group of people, but not really address whether someone was trafficked and investigate whether they're being made to pay debts, whether they were abducted, whether they're held against their will, whether there's any aspect of sex trafficking. And I think that if we're going to be publicly discussing a law about sex trafficking victims, there should be some way to address sex trafficking victims besides just shutting down a storefront and saying we can wipe our hands clean of the guilt of sex trafficking victims because now they have to work in another city. So, I mean, we have over 150 years in the state of trying to chase Chinese out of our towns and opium dens and massage parlors all being targeted. And I don't want this city to just engage in another stage of that racism. And I think if we do really care about the people involved, we need to do-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
So please come up with a mechanism to protect people, not just to shut down unsightly businesses that people think are-
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello. Nilda Val Morris, Executive Director for My Sister's House, a nonprofit that has helped victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. Through our two decades of services, My Sister's House has had a share of helping women that have worked in massage parlors and that have been of Asian descent. Although not necessarily from Sacramento, what these women have in common is that these women have spoken in Asian language as their primary language. They were, again, not from Sacramento and in fact, far away, and had no support near them, and they would later mention their trauma and their abuse. They have worked in questionable places such as this ordinance impacts. It is for these reasons that we support Councilmember Gera's ordinance. We believe that it is a first step in addressing one type of human trafficking which exists in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for hearing me. As you know, we've Sacramento County's Rape Crisis Center and Domestic Violence Agency. We also support survivors of human trafficking, specifically sex trafficking. We respectfully request your support in this initiative to stop exploitation of vulnerable people working in illicit massage businesses. And thus properly regulated, unsafe, and unlawful activity is disguised as a legitimate business, which poses a threat to people working in these businesses. We strongly support the passage of this ordinance as it prescribes expanded, uniform operating standards for the massage businesses and parlors. Prohibiting unregulated onsite residency at these businesses is fundamental to making sure that employees are not being exploited, paid unfair wages, trafficked, or held against their will. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Sherry Greven. I'm a resident of Council District Four. On behalf of Planned Parenthood Marmontay, the local Planned Parenthood affiliate serving Sacramento, we stand with service providers working with human trafficking victims and survivors every day in the city of Sacramento. And we support Councilmember Gera's work on this ordinance to bring an end to the illegal exploitation of women and girls. We support the ordinance to amend city code relating to massage establishments and its goal to avoid the prosecution of individual workers who may not understand their legal rights, have immigration or language barriers, and may be survivors of violence or trafficking. As survivors, they should be met with support services, not criminal charges, and this is an important step in that direction. Thank you, and I respectfully ask for your I-vote.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Terry Galvin, and I am the Executive Director of Community Against Sexual Harm. First, I want to thank Councilmember Gera for his work on this ordinance and for ensuring that the community was involved in the detail. My organization works with women who have been arrested for prostitution activity inside of illicit massage businesses. At this time, this is one of only a few tools the city has to remedy any problems that these businesses cause and to address complaints from the community. Unfortunately, arresting a person who may be vulnerable and unfamiliar with our legal system makes things worse, not better. The majority of the women we serve retain expensive attorneys before they understand that our reset diversion program is free and can result in dismissal of their charge. Accumulating this level of debt ensures more hardship and increases the likelihood of exploitation and human trafficking. I do believe this ordinance will help us do better. Illicit massage parlors also harm the business communities where they are located. These spaces are best suited for new entrepreneurs and family-owned businesses who want to create vibrant communities. Improving the city's ability to regulate massage establishments and supporting code enforcement is a very positive step in the direction of reducing the harms caused by illicit massage businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mai Nguyen. I'm a community activist helping the Vietnamese-American community in Sacramento, particularly the Little Saigon District, in helping them with community engagement and ensuring our AAPI voices are heard. I'm calling in today in support of the massage parlor ordinance spearheaded by Councilmember Gera. The ordinance is going to fortify the legitimate businesses across Sacramento, specifically within the Little Saigon District. It will close loopholes for unlawful businesses to exploit their workers. We are protecting our vulnerable neighbors, many of whom are women of Asian descent. We hope the new rules will prevent illegal businesses informing in Sacramento and in Little Saigon. And the new rules will also help support and protect the good businesses that are here who are providing a needed service to be able to excel and continue to grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Frank Louie, and I am the Executive Director for the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We are in full support of the massage parlor ordinance. We are very proud of the diversity of businesses we have on Stockton Boulevard, including massage therapy. We want to elevate those legitimate businesses in our corridor. This ordinance will help accomplish that. We also want to support survivors and provide effective tools to stop human trafficking in Sacramento and on our business corridor. This is a problem that has affected the region far too long. Tonight's ordinance is a win-win for our community. It brings credibility and supports our small massage businesses while going after the bad actors and helping victims. We'd like to thank Councilman Gera, along with community service organization who played a role in drafting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Wendy Hoyt, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Women and Girls Advancement Coalition. We strongly support the proposed ordinance. We want to thank Councilmember Gera for his early and extensive outreach to SWAC and to a diverseer- and to a diverse array of community-based organizations. Our support is based on the meetings we had with him starting last fall and on the one-page summary. We are unable to speak the specific language in the ordinance that came out to the public more recently. But there are a couple of things I do want to highlight on behalf of SWAC. First of all, human trafficking and prostitution houses dehumanize and exploit women, especially women and girls of color, many of whom are unfamiliar with even their most basic human rights. And so, we're very appreciative that Sacramento is taking the care to prioritize the voices of these victims and survivors of trafficking when you adopt this ordinance tonight. We also understand that the ordinance will make certain laws easier to enforce, but it's also critical to make sure that there's an allocation of sufficient funding for code enforcement. And I know staff addressed that to some degree tonight, but it still seems a little uncertain. We want to make sure that there's funding to actually do the mandated inspections and to have the desired results that the council wants. And also that there's specific support programs and funding for victims that are going to be identified during that code enforcement so that the victims are given support as well. In closing, we thank Councilmember Gera for his early engagement of SWAC and other community groups. We ask for your support of the ordinance tonight, and SWAC is committed to continue to partner with the city to protect women and girls. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is David Nelson. I'm the Director of Public Policy for the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, and I'm calling in with full support of the massage therapy ordinance that is before you tonight. We're very pleased with Councilmember Gera's initiative to put this forward as a means to an end. And the hopeful end is that sex trafficking and frankly, sex slavery would end in the city of Sacramento through locations like these that are not in compliance with standards that we feel are fair to ensure that businesses that are operating appropriately stay in business. And those that provide a threat and a risk to predominantly Asian women, as well as the neighborhoods that these businesses exist, would be weeded out. We're very pleased that the city staff has listened to our comments as well as our recommendations. We are hopeful that down the road, there could be an increased level of compliance, you could say accountability for the community. We have communicated in writing to all of your offices that we would support a color-coded compliance system, similar to that with restaurants related to their health code compliance. And we feel that the issue of sex trafficking is paramount importance as it relates to the scope of our organization. So, we really appreciate you taking up Councilmember Gera's ordinance suggestion here, and we strongly support and ask for your I-vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And this is our last caller on this item. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you so much. My name is Faith Whitmore, and I am the CEO at the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center. Hello, Mayor Steinberg and council members, and thank you for taking the time to hear these comments on this really important ordinance that Councilmember Gera has put forth. And thank you, Councilmember Gera, for bringing this to all of our attention and the needs that are so critical. I want to strongly support this ordinance to protect the lives of the women who are being trafficked. We, you know, I drive every day past too many of these establishments, and my heart goes out to those who are being kept in these places, not by their own accord. So, I just add my comments, ditto to so many who have already spoken. I think that this will serve not only the people whose lives we are trying to protect in that way, but also the businesses that surround them and the communities of which we are so proud to be a part. So, I strongly support this ordinance. I thank you for this time. And that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gera, sponsor of the ordinance, turn it over to you first.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all of the callers here. First, let me start off by saying that, you know, that this credit really goes to all of the team and everyone who brought this together. I want to thank specifically and call out some of the critical people who've been involved in this for the last few years here. And number one, with the person who was working on this day-to-day, going to evening meetings, and we went into COVID, figured out a way how to pull us together, and that's Tessa St. John's. You know, Tessa, I mean, you took this and really made it happen, really figured out how to find the right tools, connected with multiple different cities, jurisdictions, and counties, and looked at what is the best way to really piece something that provides support for the survivors, that provides also recognition of our legitimate businesses who have struggled over the last year and to figure out a pathway forward. So, Tessa, thank you very much. I also want to thank Dawn Holmes and Susan Wren in our finance division, because they've been involved in this figuring out what are the different tools that we can use, you know, to actually make a change. Other cities throughout this entire state are suffering through the same issue, and even our entire county. And that's why our county received an allocation with the work of Senator Pan, $1.2 million to study this particular issue because of how pervasive it is and how much it's affecting people. So, thank you, Tessa. Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Susan. And thank you, Laney Milstein, for providing that leadership as well within our city departments to continue to push this forward as well. Also want to thank Madeline Grigsby in my office here. Madeline was an intern and a student at Sac State when she first started working on this issue with this great team. And now, she's been on this day-to-day working with all our providers. I also want to thank the work of Sergeant Matt Young and Sergeant Martin from our police department, and then from our code officers department, Jose Medina and Peter Lemus, because they really pulled together and said, you know, what are the different tools? We don't have to only use the police department. We can use different tools to move faster and be enabled to respond quicker to these issues. And this united effort has got us to where we're at. And finally, also want to thank my colleague, Councilmember, you know, Rick Jennings and Jay Shanier. Councilmember Shanier, when we first came into, when I first came out on the council, we talked about these issues on Stockton Boulevard and pulled together, okay, how do we get all these multiple agencies to try to affect change? So, thank you for your early engagement in that effort. And then also to the providers that commented here, we heard them, they took extra time on top of what they were doing, on top of the work that they do every day to try to help us find a solution. You know, Weave, you know, Beth, thank you for taking an extra time, even though, even after the major issues that you guys faced during the beginning of the pandemic. Planned Parenthood, Sherry, thanks for calling in, Planned Parenthood Marmontay, they helped us with finding, fine-tuning some of the issues that we found. Cash specifically, because they have been engaged with us and worked with us to get that statewide budget allocation. The Family Justice Center, My Sister's House, thank you, Nilda, you're always a fighter with us. And so many, so on here that have engaged. City of Refuge also wanted, because they helped us out with our early organizing as well. And then finally, on our business partners, because many of what we heard was, we want to uplift our current small businesses, many who've been out of work for this last year and figuring out a way to support them, the legitimate massage therapists who have made this their career and their passion. Thank you to Stockton Boulevard Partnership, who represents a lot of the businesses, the Asian Pacific Island Chamber, and then also Mai Nguyen, who is in constant contact with all of the small businesses along our commercial corridors. This is a unique time where we can take an action to stop something that is victimizing people, that has been persistent, that every day when we drive out of our neighborhoods, we see this activity happening behind closed doors in some of our commercial strip areas, strip mall areas. And these strip malls, you know, have been places where we've had a difficult time to try to really crack and make a solution. And when we have found that one of these illicit businesses have violated the law and finally, using the current system that we have, shut them down, they've opened up again and continue to victimize the same people. And so, this tool allows us to make sure that everybody, everybody is involved in addressing the solution. And not only the property owner, the business owner, but the property owner too. You know, we put the property owner and the business owner engaged in this and the public by allowing them to use our code enforcement as part of this. The last piece of this, and there's still more work to do, the last piece of this here is that it's working with our CBOs. And over the next year, one of the things in Law &amp; Ledge that we ask for specifically is to hold these fines and fees so that we can look to use them to find solutions, find prevention, and support our nonprofits so that they have the tools necessary to move forward. So, the exciting thing about this entire process here has been that we've pulled together everyone. We are stronger together by all of us thinking about, how do we help the survivors break out of their situation? And how do we support the small businesses who really want to be in this industry and go after the profiteers who've been victimizing so many of us? You know, the fact is, what we see happening is equivalent to modern-day slavery. The reports that we've had about what has happened, and you heard some from Nilda from My Sister's House, are tragic. And we can make a change here today. So, there's still more work to do. This allows us to really tackle an issue in a unique way, where we not always have to use one tool in the toolbox. We've had these conversations about, are there other tools other than law enforcement? Well, we can use, our finance team here has figured out a different tool. So, a big thank to them. I think this is a win-win for all of us and a way to really make a change and provide respect and dignity for people who have been hurt so much in Sacramento. With that, Mr. Mayor, I want to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. I've got Councilmember Vang, Mayor Protam Ashby, and Councilmember Harris.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Gera for bringing this ordinance to the council for full discussion. And I also want to thank all the callers, all the organizers and staff that worked on this. You know, before I make my comments, I definitely first want to acknowledge that, first, sex and human trafficking is a real problem in our city. And I want to hold space, acknowledge that, you know, we as a city must continue to do everything we can to protect those most impacted and provide victim and survivor services in the city of Sacramento. However, it's really important for me that as we move forward with any ordinance, with any policy, that we're really intentional about implementation of our policies, of our procedures, and our practices. And most importantly, you know, I think we heard from one of the callers, is that making sure that we also provide the resources and support needed to many of the individuals who are actually sex-trafficked and harmed. Again, like I was sharing, intentionality does really matter in moments like this when we're making policy decisions. And I do want to share that, you know, I do support the intent of the ordinance, but wanted to definitely just share some reflections and concerns that I have, and it's just some comments. And really, you know, for us to have a conversation about how do we move forward in a way that's intentional, that really center the lives of those that are most impacted. You know, while I was reading this ordinance this weekend, I couldn't help but really reflect about the mass shooting in Atlanta, where six of the eight women lives were taken, those who were Asian immigrant women, right? The other pieces, my other reflections, that we are still in the middle of a global pandemic. And I can't help but think about the ways in which this ordinance, and I think about just our history, right? When government makes policy that if not implemented correctly, there could be unintended consequences. And I just wanted to share some reflection and thoughts when I was reading the ordinance. First, you know, I mentioned that, you know, this city, we are in the middle of pandemic. And as a city, we are slowly recovering from COVID, and many of our local businesses have been hurting from the pandemic, and many of them have closed. And for those that are operating legally, right, I, you know, when I was reading the ordinance and being staff, being briefed by staff, you know, I do believe that for those that are operating within city standards, that it could be an additional burden because there's fees for every worker. And I want to ensure that we, as a city, when we move forward with this ordinance, that we're truly able to provide the support that's needed for these businesses that are operating legally and within city standards. You know, right now, the city of Sacramento, we're part of a work group with PolicyLink to actually look at ways that fees are actually harmful towards minority group, right? And I think about that as we're doing this work. Like, we're doing one thing with one hand, and then we're also doing another with the other hand. And I want to make sure that we're really being intentional and holistic in the policy that we move forward. That's really important. And I also thought to myself, you know, I don't know if having additional extra fees will actually prohibit the root causes of trafficking, right? Like, that's the other piece, is it doesn't really address the root causes. And maybe it is a form of punishment, or maybe for those that are operating legally. Questions that I did have for staff during the briefing was, you know, how many established businesses do we have currently in the city of Sacramento that are a massage establishment? How many are minority-owned? And what are the projected numbers of those that are operating, you know, illegally? And staff just shared the numbers that you saw in the presentation about the number of arrests, but weren't, they weren't able to share, actually, were those like different establishment, or was it one location? And so, I needed clarification on that. The other piece that I mentioned earlier is that, you know, this is a very sensitive topic right now, just given the mass shooting and the perpetrator's rationale of his sex addiction. And what I'm also worried about is that I don't want this ordinance to further stigmatize or stereotype Asian immigrant women or businesses, as there are also legally operating businesses, good businesses that's operating in the city of Sacramento. And I think it's important for us to just recognize that, you know, in our histories, you know, systems and institutions have really laid the kind of groundwork for exploitation. Government oftentimes can use bad policy to also have probable cause for targeting communities. And I just want us to be cognizant of that as well. You know, in this ordinance, I also want to call out that I really appreciate that, you know, what we're trying to do here is to hold business owners accountable, right? But what I'm also thinking is that, you know, what support are we going to provide for our local organizations, like My Sister's House and folks that, you know, called in, individual workers, which I know many of the public commentators commented, that are Asian immigrant women, those that don't understand their legal rights, those that have immigration and language barriers, right? They are victims. They are survivor of violence, of sex trafficking, and they too need support. And really want to make sure that as we're moving forward, we're really thinking about that. The last comment I just, you know, want to share again and emphasize is that I want to ensure that as a city, again, that we're not creating policies without supporting those most marginalized, without support for code enforcement, and most importantly, that we're not, you know, implementing a policy that may have unintended consequences that we may not foresee, such as targeting a specific community group, when there's already a narrative out there about the hyper-sexualization of Asian American, of Asian immigrant women. I just want us to be very cognizant of that as we move forward. I understand the intent of the ordinance, so I'm not opposed to it, but I think for me, it was really important to be able to voice that, right? What I've heard from organizers on the ground as well, that does this work, this really important work, because we do have to make sure we address the root causes. We have to make sure we protect humanity and protect our women and girls. And that is at the center of all of this. But how do we do in a way that we really don't replicate the same kind of systems that we're trying to fight against? And so, I just wanted to share that and really just think all the organization, the staff. And I know Councilmember Gera, you've been working really hard on this, but wanted to make that comment because I think it's really important. You know, we're talking about racial equity, our racial equity initiative, thinking through different lens, right? And that's, this is my lens, and this is what I've heard from also advocates as well on the ground. And want to be able to vocalize that and share that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember, Mayor Protam Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Vang, for helping us see this ordinance through your lens, because that's a very important lens, always, but especially when we're legislating a group of people that you so relate to, right? Asian immigrant women. Mayor, I have a lot of strong feelings about this item, and so I organize my thoughts beforehand, and I'm going to try to walk through those as succinctly as I can. I want to start by saying that I really appreciate that Councilmember Gera, and he noted a few other councilmembers who had been helping him- Really want to do the good work on this topic. That is encouraging. That's very encouraging. Women need allies. So thank you for that. I also want to thank the callers who called in. On with all all the varying opinions, there was no one in the call bank that was wrong. There are really good components to this ordinance. In fact, I would say three fourths of it, I think, are solid. But the one fourth or the that last piece, I have tremendous exception with. And I'm going to ask my colleagues. To please, please hear what I am about to say to you and what I think Councilmember Vang is trying to say to you. Because this is us trying to show you through a lens of being a female policymaker. How we're viewing this ordinance and how we perceive it to be interpreted. And I think that should be really important. There are sort of pieces of this for me. First of all, I'd like to tell you my timeline on this item. In August of two thousand and seventeen, there was an armed robbery in my district at a tobacco store next door to a massage parlor. Immediately following that armed robbery, I went after two ordinances. The massage parlor ordinance and the tobacco ordinance. I asked for both of them to come forward. They were both sent to Law and Ledge in two thousand and seventeen. And they both had a similar trajectory for how how they went. During that time, I worked with city staff. On the massage parlor ordinance. At that time, the staffing was John Dangberg, Carl Simpson and his team and Tessa and the Revenue Division. At staff's request. In February of two thousand and eighteen. I met with the California Massage Therapy Chairman, CEO and their Government Relations Director. And I heard from them about the statewide policies that they were working to bring forward and that they asked Sacramento to lead on. My Chief of Staff at that time was Kevin Green. And I had a policy analyst named Paco in my office. And they did a tremendous amount of work looking at what other cities were doing. Some of the same work that Councilmember Gera's office has done. And some of the same work that our city staff have done. All of that body of work is good from all of us. And collaborating to move it forward is important. I want to note that in the staff report, there is a very important sentence. And I think this is the sentence where we have fallen short. So I'm going to ask you to hear it and then put a pin in it and think about it as I move through my comments. The advocates support this item, but they stress that we do not. Persecute the workers. I think we may have missed the mark on that. And I'd like to tell you why. The original effort to move this forward through Law and Ledge was to comply with the effort for state efficiencies. City staff did an incredible job. Tessa Finance, Carl Simpson, his team. For some of those people, John Dangberg and Carl Simpson are gone. I will tell you that John Dangberg went so far as to in his off hours. Go visit some of the massage parlors to get his own firsthand frame of reference to work on this ordinance. And I will continue to be very proud of Tessa and everyone else involved in this effort. Because it is important, meaningful work, particularly around the goal of compliance. But I would be lying to you if I said I wasn't frustrated that it's been four years since it was sent to Law and Ledge by me. And that during that time, it has come back with some components unrecognizable and unsupportable on my end. The first part of the ordinance, which removes massage parlors from any reference to adult establishments. Is incredibly important and great work. The second portions that deal with requiring permits and industry standards and process are also very important. And walk us through a process for people if they have a complaint. Those are all very important, very relevant, very well put together components that would have a tremendous outcome in helping us address bad actors. That accreditation piece, that certification piece that works. Let's be clear. But then we come to section five point one two four point three one oh. And this is the section. Where we begin to tell the women who work in these massage parlors. What they can wear. What time of day they can work. And the fact that they can't have somebody else working in the room with them. As a woman, I will tell you. That actually they're safer in twos. There are, and I have to ask you to please consider this. An ordinance that tells women how to dress at work to avoid. A sexual interaction is a victim shaming component. It just is. It's unintentional, nobody did it on purpose, everybody's trying to do the right thing. But I am telling you as a woman that when part of your strategy. For knocking down human sex trafficking is to tell the women how to make themselves less of a target. Without any accountability on the men who are coming to the massage parlors seeking something besides a massage. That we are focused on the wrong half of the equation. I think this is where we miss the point of persecuting the victims further. The burden is placed entirely on the women. As if how they dress or what time of day they are working or where they are working or who they are working with or what the lighting outside the building is. Would keep them safer. There is nothing in this ordinance other than the idea that some of the fees. Which I think this is a great idea and I'm sure it was Councilmember Gera's idea, it is smart. That the fees go to organizations that work with human sex trafficking victims. That's a great idea. But those fees are going to be woefully inadequate for the need and for the services that women need. So we as a city need to supplement that. We've got to prioritize how we help women who are being victimized in our city. Not just with this ordinance. But with the service providers that you heard on the phone today, all of whom are great. And all of whom I'm sure are happy to see anything like this moving forward. I've been a very strong supporter of every one of them that called in today. And I feel like we can do better than this. The idea of timing on this just cannot be ignored. As Councilmember Vang said, she and Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Stenbergen and I. Less than a few weeks ago, we're at a candlelight vigil in front of City Hall honoring women. Who were killed. In this very industry because their existence was a temptation. I want to make sure that we don't offend anyone with our timing. And we are also in the middle of a pandemic. This is one of the industries that has been hit very hard. And a portion of this that hasn't been resolved is also in the title seventeen component that doesn't allow. People to do massage therapy from home. Which should be allowed. Women should be able to, or men should be able to run their business out of their home. But this ordinance coupled with. Our our existing rules would not allow that to happen. And I think that should have been addressed. I think this entire body of work ties in with the idea, Mayor, of getting to a functional zero. On working with women who are facing homelessness and children. Because so many of the women on the street are victims. Victims of domestic violence, victims of sexual assault, victims of sex trafficking, victims of child abuse, victims across the board. And where we tie in resources to help them is critically important. We have a real problem with the lens of the last part of this ordinance. And I'm just going to tell you that I think that lens is systemic and and expands far beyond this ordinance. And I want to bring this up in this point, too. I asked about the staffing in our Sacramento Police Department Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Unit. I asked about the backlog on cases being investigated. On communication to victims, on process and on the delays of rape kits. I await those answers. I am dedicated to the idea that we owe it to women and children to protect them in this city. If we're not dedicating the resources. To dealing with rape and sexual assault and human sex trafficking. In a meaningful and significant way, then we are failing at the most basic level. My request of this motion would be that we can move forward with the vast majority of it. But I believe that we should come back to the council on the section. That tells women who work in the massage industry, what they can wear, when they can work. Whether or not they can work with a partner and how they can work from home. I think those items need further clarification. I don't think we should place those kinds of regulations on women who we know if they're in that situation are being sex trafficked. That is what the data tells us. I would also like to ask if the maker of the motion is willing to accept that as an as a friendly amendment. That's fine. And if he's not, then I'll make a substitute motion removing that piece from the ordinance and moving forward tonight. But I would also like to ask that in relation to this, that the police department come back to all of us, not just me. With the numbers on our sex crime unit. What staffing do they need? How far behind are we? How are we doing in serving women and victims in this city? I'd also like to know more about the title seventeen prohibition on working from home. For me, this is always going to be about protecting women and children. About putting them first. About doing the best that we can. And I won't include this with this motion, but Mayor, I will say this to you at some point in the future. I will ask. That the city manager work with all of us on some type of time limit for when we send items to Law and Ledge. I know it's a crowded calendar. Vice Mayor Sheneer's done great work there and he's had some difficult topics like cannabis that he's had to deal with year over year. But for those of us who are not on Law and Ledge, when we send something to Law and Ledge, if it can't be heard by Law and Ledge in a reasonable amount of time. It ought then to come back to the full council for review and not further bog his calendar. Or further delay action that's important to the council member who sent it to that committee. So I guess, Councilmember Gera, my question is for you. Would you like to modify your motion?
To Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Before Councilmember Harris was next up, but I am going to turn to Councilmember Geta to respond to. Your suggested amendments. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and thank you for bringing those points up because I actually agree a hundred percent with those. And what I would like to do, though, before we make that motion, though, I want to go to the staff on this. Because those recommendations came from our city staff. And and actually, I'll credit Councilmember Hanson for bringing up the issue about attire. And and maybe Councilmember Harris will like to comment or or Councilmember.
No, let's let's hear from the staff. Go ahead.
On that, but I'll ask I'll ask their staff to talk to Tessa about a couple of things. One, the clothing issue, the hours of operation. And then also, correct me if I'm wrong, but but we've always prohibited and not allowed in home. That's in in home business. Correct me if I'm wrong on that aspect of it. So those three points that were identified. But but yeah, to the point, Tessa, do you mind talking about kind of staff's thinking on that and and why you thought we should keep it in the ordinance?
Sure. So with regards to the the items about the dress and, you know, the hours of operation, having multiple people in one room. Those came from kind of the recommended best practices from the California Massage Therapy Council. I think, you know, the intent being those are ways to identify, you know, if a business, if there might be more going on. At a business than massage that there, you know, things that are going on. So I think the the intent was not, you know, so much to cite the women so much, you know, that might be engaged in that behavior. But as a way to identify the problem businesses and then take action against those business permits. So I think, you know, that's kind of the idea behind those items. The prohibition or the restriction on seeing clients from home, I would maybe defer. I'm not sure if there's someone from planning here that is a title seventeen code. It's related to their general home occupation restrictions that kind of. Cover most healing arts professions with regards to kind of limiting the amount. I think customers that are coming in and out of someone's home business or clients. But.
Tessa, yeah, I'm very familiar with the article seventeen. That's why I mentioned it. That's why I asked that it would be taken up as part of the review. That that was my comment. It is not addressed in this ordinance, but it is addressed in title seventeen. And my ask is that they look at it again. It doesn't need to be as part of this ordinance, Councilmember Gera. My only request as to your motion is that we take that body of work, which Tessa has just described. That came from the statewide massage therapy group as recommendations. And that we give that a secondary review because through my lens, and I believe you heard from Councilmember Vang's lens. That particular section is offensive.
So we clarified how it how the recommendation was made and I heard Councilmember Geta say. Happily that he was willing to take the amendments now that we've clarified how it came forward. So I think the answer to your question is yes.
Yes. Of course, and we again, you know, we deferred to our our great staff. You know, Tessa, Susan and Dawn, who put a great work in this and and glad to make that change there. The other question I have for Tessa, you know, not all of this had to be, has to be in the ordinance. We can use training and training for for staff. So is that correct, Tessa? I mean, that's how we dealt with some other issues as well.
Correct. I mean, there is room to administer the program through, make some policy decisions about the way the program is administered. As opposed to having it in the ordinance.
That's great. Thank you for taking the modification, Councilmember Garrett, and thank you for your work.
Well, great. Well, thank you. And I I still want to go back and thank Tessa for that because those these were, these were tricky questions that we were trying to balance and and thank you for your work. So thank you.
We're getting a clarity here. Good work, everybody. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Harris here.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilmember Ashby, I appreciate your passion in bringing up these issues. In looking at them, I would say that I've come to somewhat different conclusions that you have respectfully. I I'm okay with taking a second swing of this ordinance if Eric is, but. You know, I have also worked on this for a number of years. I had a couple of massage parlors that were very pernicious in my district on Franklin Boulevard and one on J Street. Where we knew there was trafficking going on, but we didn't have the toolkit to shut those businesses down. This ordinance has been two and a half years in the making. It's been discussed at Law and Ledge more than once. I think that actually this creates a substantial toolkit to get at the heart of the issue of illicit businesses. That engage in sex trafficking and prostitution, which are heinous crimes against women, no, no question. I I would be fine passing this ordinance as it is today. I think the hours of operation piece makes sense. As far as the attire, I can see that from both sides of that lens. But again, it is a tool. And I think we need very strong tools in this regard because we tried to shut down some of these operations for years in my district and got nowhere. We just simply didn't have the mechanism. I think that those best practices recommended our best practices. And so so I'm I'm okay with the ordinance as it is and I'd be fine passing it. But if the maker of the motion wants to alter it, I'll go with your best wishes on this, Eric, if we want to have further conversation. Hey, I'm pretty clear, but I do have a question for Tessa as well.
So let's go quick because we got another long item here.
I I got it. Tessa, you know, if somebody, if the established permit is revoked, there's a two year moratorium on putting a business in the same location, correct? For this ordinance?
Correct. Yes, the city may prohibit.
And yet in other areas of our code, we have longer prohibitions, correct?
Correct.
So with tobacco?
Yeah, I believe tobacco is five years. I think that's the individual can't get another permit rather than the location. I'm not sure, though, I Peter might, if he's here, he could say exactly what. I'm not sure, though. I Peter might, if he's here, he could say exactly what it is, but it is a five-year moratorium.
So the point I'm getting to is this, that the location actually made a big difference in my in my locale. If we were successful at closing it, it would reopen again. People would reorganize and be right back in business. It's extremely frustrating. And so, Mr. Garrett, I would say to you, if you're going to bring this ordinance back and look for changes, I would suggest that we go to a five-year moratorium on reinstituting an established permit in the same locale because we've already experienced problems like this over and over again. They seem to want to come back to the same locations. I find this to be very problematic. So Peter, is it with tobacco, is this on the location or the permit holder?
If we submit suspend them or revoke them, it goes on the permit holder, but then the location also falls under the proximity requirements. So it goes back to it could possibly never have a establishment there again.
OK, so so Eric, I would ask you to entertain that when you bring this back.
Yeah, let me be clear with the motion. The motion is to move the staff report in the item with the exclusion of the the clothing items, the clothing. What do you call it? The the, oh, my gosh, Tessa, can you help me out with that?
Yeah, the attire restrictions.
Yes.
OK.
Eric, it's Section 5.124.310, and it is a few things around what they wear and whether or not two of them can be in the same room at the same time. It's just a couple of restrictions that are placed on the women themselves workers, but that's the Section 310.
Yep, that is correct. Yeah, but I intend to move the move the item today.
Then I would ask if I would ask if you take an amendment then to alter it from two years to five years prohibition in the same location if the establishment permit is revoked.
Well, I'm fine with five years. I mean, I think the two-year came about in conversations with the some of the business, some of the property owners. But Tessa, can you maybe discuss a little bit about how the two-year number came about with the property owners?
Yeah, I know the best practice recommendation was basically one to five years. That's pretty much the standard through other local jurisdictions that have similar ordinances. They usually range from one to five years, and that's been successful. I don't remember exactly the discussions where we kind of landed on two, but I think it was, you know, discussing with a variety of stakeholders and trying to find a middle ground.
Well, thank you, Tessa. I'd be supportive of five years. It sends a strong message to the the property owners that they need to be engaged in what's happening and who they lease to. So thank you, Councilmember Harris. And I do want to thank Councilmember Harris has been consistently active in fundraising for the survivors and the services for those in Stockton, in the Stockton Boulevard and Broadway corridor. So I do want to thank his his support for that. It's been consistent.
Thank you. Thank you. So that's part of your motion then.
OK, and the second the seconder of the motion accepts that amendment as well?
I accept both the amendments, Mr. Harris's and Mr. and and Ms. Ashby's.
OK, very good. Let's move now. See if we can move relatively quickly because I think we're coming to consensus point here, which is Councilmember Lalo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And Councilmember Garrett, thank you so much for bringing this to light so we can actually look at it. And and thank you very much to my colleagues with their their concerns and explanations. It it was. Thank you. I do have some concerns. One, I want to make sure that we're not stereotyping this profession. Number two, I want to make sure that majority of responses or the research that we've done, it seems like it's with a state representative or, you know, whoever is at the higher level that controls the these permits at state level. Did we just interview the big corporations of how to put up this kind of an ordinance? Or do we actually go and talk to the smaller, you know, single person owners that also are in the same profession? Because again, I want to make sure that, and I think my my colleague alluded to this, that we're not putting such a heavy-handed regulations where the small operators are completely destroyed. And now we have the big operators are just gonna they're they're gonna expand. Also, within this ordinance, I think it's also very important, or, you know, maybe at a later time, that we have to make sure that the employees, the individuals that work within that business, I think there has to be some kind of a requirement of putting up some kind of a signage so the customers and the the workers can see where to call, who to discuss, and especially for the workers that are trafficked or what have you, that they know that they actually have rights, that if they call and file a complaint, that they're not going to be threatened by the the operator of any deportation or anything like that. So a plaque would be great. It has to be visible to the customers and the clients and to the workers. Just just a suggestion. The business from home, again, I I think it's it's an industry that if it's being conducted out of a house, there will be somewhere of a comfort level versus, you know, being in a business in the middle of like some dark area versus your own house that you have cameras, protection, everything that you feel much more secure. And that's about it. And then the hours, you know, we're dictating 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which again, I'm I'm for. But I just want to make sure that our studies included the small operators as well. And coming out of this pandemic, increasing the fees is another thing I might have a little bit of an issue with, especially for legitimate, small business owners. So that that those are my few concerns. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mary. And yes, thank you for this discussion. I've learned a lot, and and I think I'm really supportive of where this motion is going. Just to reiterate, I don't think anybody on this call is opposed to having tools if we know there's a problem. You know, I think we all recognize that there's a gap in tools and that we need more tools so that when there's a problem. But I think what we're also saying is the problem of sex trafficking is going to take more than this tool. And I think the conversation that we want to open up, that I'm very supportive of of the resources and what that's going to look like and how we do, like a lot of what my mayor Pro Tim Ashby and my colleague Councilmember Vang were saying about what does it really take to tackle that issue? Shutting down one business isn't enough. This is an important step in that direction, but you know, we've got to talk about not just the fines and fees with this ordinance, which I'm really glad that's in there that are going to go to supporting that work. But what else we could be doing to really tackle the root of this issue, which which is resources investment of a different of a different kind? So I'm really, really interested in that. And I appreciate the blind spots that have been pointed out here and Councilmember Garrett's willingness to to kind of look at that again and make sure that we're being as thoughtful as we can be. And I do want to make sure that we don't miss another part of Mayor Pro Tim Ashby's ask about the police reporting back on open cases and backlogs of cases because I think that's an important thing for us to understand so that we can really, again, talk about how we approach this problem in a really holistic in a holistic way. So thank you, Councilmember Garrett, for your work on this, and everybody for your willingness to indulge this conversation.
OK, I want to make a quick comment. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Getta to close. I'm really very happy about the way this debate occurred and how it it came together. And I think this is really, really important piece of legislation. I can't help thinking about the resource question and the outreach question of the victims. And I know Bridget Dean, who was on the was on the Zoom call, already has plenty to do. But over time, I could imagine the Department of Community Response, including in its mission, the outreach to the victims of sex trafficking, just as you you will use the 911 triage to address victims of domestic violence. Of course, there can be overlap here as well. And so and that will require funding. That will require funding and but it's inappropriate. It's appropriate to think of funding that kind of outreach, case management and help for the victims, just like what we're doing with the Fuel Network, right? A great source of pride in terms of protecting our immigrant community. And and again, resources are always tight, but expanding what we view as a core city function, certainly fighting sex trafficking in every way, needs to be part of what we are about as a city. So, Eric, I turn it over to you for a final, a final comment.
Yeah, all I'll say is I want to thank everyone. This really was a collaborative effort. I, you know, I know some of the commentators mentioned my name, but but really, this was everyone pulling together, trying to find the best solution forward. And and Tessa did go out and, you know, Councilmember Lalo talked to the small business operators. We had stakeholder meetings with the individual, which are all family individually, local owned business owners here in Sacramento. We did that outreach there. Even I want to thank the Sacramento Jewish Women's Network because they came to us and brought up the attention that the state law had required signage. And we weren't and had nowhere in our ordinances that requirement that signage. So that's now in the ordinance as as well as the signage requirement. And yes, to that point, being sensitive, using the right lens and the vision. And I I just want to again, take this time to thank our our great team, all our city staff who then who were involved in this. Tessa, Susan, Dawn, Laney, Madeline in my office, Kois A. Turn, who are all working on this regularly. And so all I'd say, I ask for your eye vote. Thank you for all this collective work. We are stronger together.
Howard Chan, City Manager, had a had a a comment here.
No, I'm just going to ask Tessa to restate the the motion here just for clarity's sake because there's been a lot of stuff said, and I want to make sure we get it right. Tessa?
Thank you. Thank you, Howard. So the motion is to pass the ordinance with the removal of the restrictions on the attire. How many people are allowed to be in a room as well as increasing the moratorium on the location to five years from two years?
And what about the issue of women working from home? I heard that too.
Yeah, that was to come back, Mr. Mayor, as a Title 17 issue.
That'll come back through L and L.
A relook at Title 17. There's a couple other pieces in there that Tessa missed that are have to do with the personal accountability of women. But Suzanne Alcala Wood has a complete list and the police report back that Councilmember Valenzuela and myself both mentioned.
OK.
And the part that Councilmember Harris added, I'm sorry, the five years. Yeah.
Very good. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lalo?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Resoundling strong aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Very good. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for the advocates and the public that called in. All right, we have one more item tonight, but it's a very, very important item. And I'd like to preview it before I turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela for the presentation. Today, of course, the George Floyd verdict came in, and that's made the news. But there was another important bit of news made in Los Angeles today. Federal Judge David Carter issued an order, a preliminary injunction, requiring the city of Los Angeles to shelter everybody who lives on Los Angeles's Skid Row within 120 days. He also took the step, the extraordinary step of essentially taking a billion dollars from the city of Los Angeles budget and putting it in escrow for him as the federal judge to determine how it can be best, how it best could be spent to meet that order to bring everybody into shelter or a safe ground within 120 days. It was a drastic order, but a clear statement by a federal judge that unless government does everything in its power to bring thousands off the streets, the courts will intervene and create a de facto right to shelter or right to housing. Now, in Sacramento, we have the opportunity to accomplish the same goal contained within the judge's order without the intervention of the courts. If we follow through on developing a strong master siding plan and provide thousands of beds, roofs, and safe spaces for our unsheltered population here and work with the county as we are doing and enhance that collaboration, we can not only make a demonstrable and visible difference on homelessness in Sacramento, helping thousands of people along the way, but we can also captain our own destiny for how we handle the problem. But today in Los Angeles is a cautionary tale. And they've done a lot of work down there. Mayor Garcia, they've done work for years. And of course, it's a larger city, and they have a huge, huge problem. But we have an opportunity to do it even better and differently and to chart our own course, but only if we take what we're about to embark on tonight and take it seriously. I want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for volunteering to be the first here. As you know, what we will be doing over the next several weeks is we're gonna, I'm asking each of the council members, and we're working with all of you schedule wise, to come forward and make a presentation on your sites for safe ground, shelter, safe parking, congregate shelter, permanent housing and affordable housing. And in the end, the number times eight plus whatever we may do with the county with the campus style, a campus program for people with the most chronic and serious conditions needs to add up to thousands. It needs to add up to many thousands. And if it does, we will then be able to say that we've got a safe place for everybody. And if not, we're going to continue with this Gordian knot and this great frustration where we where our constituents complain. We complain. We spend so much time talking about sites one at a time instead of having one hard discussion and debate with your leadership about where we want to cite what is necessary. And then everything from June on, when we take this vote, will be about implementation. And so tonight's the start, and I look forward to this presentation. I look forward to the presentations in the weeks ahead. We're going to take all of it, and we're going to put it into a single master plan, which will be an ordinance of some kind or resolution. And it all leads towards an important vote for our city council. Councilmember Valenzuela, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. And thank you, colleagues. I'm excited to present to you the draft of the D4 homelessness task force plan. I hope you can see that. OK, can you see that? OK, Mary? Oh, he's not watching.
Yep, we can see it.
I see nodding. Great. We can see it. Good. Just wanted to make sure. I messed up during our last community meeting, so wanted to double check. But those of you who know me know that this is a big part of why I ran. This is a big part of what I wanted to do. We actually started our task force before I was sworn in. Our first meeting was in December so that we could get a rolling start. And I want to take start off by recognizing the work of this task force. We were very deliberate in how we formed this group. I wanted members of the major neighborhood groups, the service providers, the folks who are representing advocates and and other folks. But what was most important, and I do want to pause briefly and let Tuana speak, if Tuana is on. We've been really blessed and lucky to have folks experiencing homelessness now join our group to give their insights. And so I love before I began my presentation to let Tuana speak for a few moments. So Tuana?
Am I muted?
Yes.
OK, I just want to I want to thank you for letting me, everybody joining you guys, and thank you. And I wanted to say that I think that this would work if we let the homeless help build things, help get into it, you know, help do things around, you know, when when all this is coming through, like the tiny houses that we speak on and and that. Um, I'm, this is a, I want to say I talk about sex trafficking for just a second. I, I was, I was, I was a victim a long time ago. I'm sorry. And it affected me to this day. When you guys were talking about that, it touched me, you know, because people don't, I'm just, um, it was a long time ago, but I got out. But I'm just going to say that, um, there is, there, you got it, when you go in about this, because, um, they, they sit there and when you go in, I'm just going to be honest, when you go in, they, 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 the person that, that wants the girl, they ask them, you know, they, you have to know that they have that in their, in their, their massage thing, okay? That's how you, I mean, you have, it's not just anybody can go in there. You have to say, you know, something or whatever, and then they, they, they take the girl and, you know? You just got to get, get, look into it, you know, more than what, what you guys are saying right now. If you got to, um, it's just not just given fines and stuff like that. It's, it's, you know, digging into it and seeing what the, you know, what, um, the women, you know, who were there and stuff like that, because I, I got tech off the streets and put in there, you know? And it's still affecting me to this day, you know? But I'm sorry about that, um.
Don't apologize, Tuana. I'm so just incredibly moved that you even shared that with us. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't going to first, but you know, God just touched me to say something, you know? Because it's, it's, it's very important that you guys are doing this because a lot of women, and, and it needs to be, um, taught more, you know, of what the, how they go, how people go about getting, you know, women, because they'll, they'll tell them they're going to be a, um, a, um, a model or something. And then they'll, you know, um, the girl thinks that she's going to go to a model and place, and then they snatch her up and take her, you know? It needs to be more, um, you know, things about, um, um, letting people learn how, you know, it just is happening, I think, you know? Um, because I never knew about it until, you know, and then it happened to me and it was, it was traumatic. I mean, it was. And I got out and I survived and, yeah. But that really affected me when you guys were talking about it, you know? And, um, about the housing, I'm sorry, I, I got off, I got off track. I'm sorry, guys. Um, yeah, the housing, um, I think that, um, I'm sorry. I think that, um, it's bringing back memories.
It's okay, Tuana, take your time.
Um, I think that, that, that the housing, um, people should, um, people should be able to, you know, um, join in and be a part of it, you know? And because it would make them respect the, um, housing that they're going to a little bit more. And, um, like if you, um, like the advocates, if they, you know, are in, then, you know, because we've been, we've out here, I've been out here 20 years off and on. And, um, I, um, we've had people come up here and say that we want, you know, they want us to put us indoors, but we're still out here, you know? But you guys are doing, you know, we're, we're seeing, you know, progress and stuff and you guys really want to. And so I've been talking, I've talked to a lot of people and asked them all kinds of questions, what, you know, what they want and stuff like that. And, and, and one is to get involved and then two is to, um, two is to, um, you know, be a part of it and, and, and so we, we can feel like we've, we've done something because we will respect it a lot more. And then, then another one is, is when, wherever you put us, to have a community thing so we could meet the people around, you know, that have neighbors, you know, know, get to know us and say, don't say, oh, they're, or, you know, there's, there's one of them or something like that, you know? They get, because it's crazy, if they get to know us, we're not that bad. You know, we're not, we're really not that bad, you know? I mean, because I love to kill elders and, you know, and, and most people I know are, you know, they're, they're not that bad, you know? Every day, you wrote, you know, I don't know. Yeah.
No, I just, I'm so, honestly, I should just let Tuana talk for the rest of the time because I think her experience is just so powerful and I'm just so grateful, Tuana, that you're willing to wait all this time to, to share a bit of, of yourself, um, with us. So, um, I don't know how to follow that now because Tuana is incredible. And, and I think what I just want to say, this, her engagement in this is critical. And I think really when we work with advocates, when we work with folks experiencing homelessness, it's just such a different experience. It's such a more powerful experience and it's going to lead to solutions that are going to have more of an impact, that are going to really, um, bringing all these stakeholders together and then layering on the lived experience of someone like Tuana is just, it's invaluable. And, and I do want to say something very clearly, that what is happening on our streets is not okay with anybody. And, and I think particularly for women and LGBTQ folks on the streets, what's happening, what Tuana just shared, this is totally unscripted, but I'm just going to say it, is happening way too much. Um, we know it's happening. We know a lot of women on the street who have this story that Tuana just shared. Um, it's horrible what's going on in our streets. We have to act quickly. And if that doesn't move you, you know, we went through mustard seed school, our staff last week and saw this note, which I know is hard to read with the glare, um, from a child, uh, who says that their dream was to not be homeless anymore and to help others who are. And I hope no one goes through the things that I go through from the mouth of babes. I also want to say that I think the trust, the lack of trust really goes always. I've really noticed that it's not just housed people who say, oh, you're not really going to make a difference. It's also unhoused people. Um, there's been a lot of broken promises. There's been people who've promised things, they've gone into shelters and ended up back out on the street, different things that have happened. And so like, we really need, I think it's not all the city's fault and nobody's saying it's our fault, but I'm so proud that we've taken this on because we have a real opportunity here to scale, as, as the mayor said, um, in his opening. And I think that's just so very important for us to take that opportunity and to go as far and as fast as we possibly can. So to get into our strategies, my goodness, I'm like, I feel like I just want to scrap the slides and just really let Tuana talk for the next 20 minutes. But, um, I, I want to go over the high level of what we've talked about and then hear your questions. Um, and this is just an outline of the overarching work, the short-term triage, transitional housing and long-term approach, and obviously the prevention that this plan includes. So for overarching principles, collaboration has come up a lot. And that's not just with each other. I think a lot of folks in our surveys have talked about wanting to work with other council districts, wanting to make sure this is citywide, but they've also talked region-wide, not just with the county, with other cities in the county, with neighboring counties. You know, we need to approach this really statewide and, and really use our leverage maybe as a capital city to, to push for solutions that are going to work and those partnerships that we desperately need. And we also talked about good neighbor policies, which have come up quite a bit and some of which are in practice right now at the safe grounds. Um, trash and noise impacts, um, onsite staffing is critical. Um, eventually graduating to self-governance is the goal. Um, and of the steps that first step is preparing to take a safe ground where folks can elect their own representatives to help triage problems and work with staff to make the site successful. Basic needs like bathrooms, shower access, food access, um, the things that people literally need to live, um, security for folks. And this isn't just for folks within the camps. This is also for folks outside of the camps. I think we're all aware that sometimes camps become targets, um, for folks who, who are doing things that maybe they shouldn't. And so having folks onsite who can protect people, um, and when needed is really important, as well as obviously clear points of contact so that the surrounding community has someone they can call if they're concerned, if they want to help, that they have a way to plug into the work. And then meaningful case management, I think I was so heartened to get the Built for Zero briefing from our staff and county staff and S H R A and, and I think Saks Up Forward are all involved in this idea of really deep case management, because it is not one size fits all. And we know it's not one size fits all. And the only way to surmount that challenge is to really build relationships. They call it like a by-name list, but I know Tuana and I know where she's at and I know what she wants and what she needs. And we have that trust and relationship to work with Tuana as an example, right? That, that if I was doing that case management would work. And we have folks locally who are doing that, like through the Transitional Youth Collaborative that, um, are working with T A and, and doing that work now, who could really teach us a lot, I think, about how to build. So specifically, the initiatives that we're outlining here, obviously triage has to come right now. Um, we've got to find a spot for folks to be. Um, the heartbreaking call that I got when a woman was found apparently murdered on the American River Trail from the press was a very specific question, which was, do you think she would have died if she was, had access to a safe space? And the answer was probably no, um, probably not. I think we all know that answer. You know, folks have a safe place to be and a safe place to go. And we need to do that as quickly as possible to alleviate the pressure in our community and the safety needs that are happening right now. And I'm so proud of the declarations we've made and the steps we've made in that direction. And this could mean new sites, this could mean triaging existing sites where folks are kind of stable and maybe just need some resources and support. And it's not a long-term solution, but it is a way that we can alleviate the pain right now. So the sites that we've identified in my district, um, at this time cover about 500 or so potential spots. Um, so there's existing sites that are privately run, um, which is the Safe Ground at 12th and C. That's not a city site. That was started long before, actually, the city started doing that work and has been in the works for over a decade, really. We have the two safe grounds that the city set up at W X and at South Front Street, in other words, near Miller Park. And then we had two sites that, um, needed to close for various reasons. Um, potential sites that we've looked at are all mostly private sites with the exception of city parking lots. Um, you know, it feels like 40 to 50 is the right number for a parking lot at scale and with size restrictions. And so we've identified a few options here and are working now. I will note that based on our community survey we just did, we had a parking lot, um, listed at 21st and Capitol that we have taken off the list because the restaurant's needed, it's the only parking garage in the area and they need evening parking, so it wasn't going to work. And so we took that off the list based on feedback. And we did add on to the list consideration of the Old Realese, um, parking lot on Freeport Boulevard, which would require a lot more outreach and engagement before it became a part of our final list, but came up on several surveys as a potential opportunity site. When we talk about the motel voucher program, and I'm so thrilled, um, that the county is keeping their motel vouchers online, because this is, as the mayor mentioned in the media today, a really amazing program. People get a room with the door and a lock and a bathroom. And it's just really incredible that the federal administration is reimbursing us for as much of that as, as we can handle. So we're really excited that, I think this number is even out of date. I'm sure Bridgette and Danielle have, I think they're well over 300 at this point. I think last I saw it was closer to 500 going on, 600 rooms. But these are critical and it's a win-win-win because you've got a business now that's got occupancy and revenue coming in. You've got people with a place to stay. You've got a community now who, who can support, better support and plug in to, to help people who are trying to move off the streets. Tiny home villages have become very popular. I think when we did our first community survey, that was like the number one thing that kept coming up is tiny homes, tiny homes, tiny homes. And I put a picture on here because I think I want to make sure people know, these can be permanent transitional housing. And, and one thing I'd really like us to explore that I've talked to some artists about is making them colorful, making them beautiful, maybe doing what Tuana said in terms of inflowing people to help us build these tiny homes. Like it doesn't have to be something that looks super industrial. It could be something like in San Jose, um, a Caltrans partnership project looks really nice and like a place that I wouldn't mind living. Um, so some of the sites we've identified for this, um, which can fit a lot of spots potentially, the Caltrans parcels under W X, we can't be under the platform, so it reduced our number considerably because they said you could only be on the periphery essentially, but we could have some beautiful tree-lined streets with tiny homes and, and still enable the parking and events that need to happen at those lots. Of the Miller Park site that's currently being used for safe parking could be used for tiny homes if that's something we can work out with city needs and logistics, as well as potentially public land. You know, the county comes into land quite frequently through tax defaults, through different issues that happen. And, and we really want to make sure there's a system to move that land when it's available into city management or, or some other form so that we can maybe put tiny homes there or house people. And then there are some large vacant lots, actually, one of the only ones in my district. So I homed in on them pretty quickly. They're not near homes, they're off El Camino near I-5, they're around the commercial business area and a hotel. And I thought, gosh, that's six acres, that's currently for sale, that could fit a lot of tiny homes if we built it strategically. And it's something that I've really honed in on as a big opportunity site, if we can make that work as a city. Supportive living is, is so key. And this is something that's also come up a lot in our surveys is what about the folks who need mental health services? What about the folks that need substance abuse treatment, who just need that more intensive care? I've also talked to the hospitals, as I know a lot of you have, and they're ready. They want to partner. Some of them have actually tried this in limited circumstances where they've partnered with housing programs to do case management and brought the resources to really make that successful. So we have a lot of great lessons already in our community with these different models and attempts that have happened in the past. Um, so key opportunity sites there. If we extended motel vouchers, that could create really great targeted sites that I know Bridgette and Danielle have talked to me about, like having a site that was for folks who just have a certain type of need that we could really case manage and treat in partnership with health professionals. And there is also a place called Boys Ranch. And I know there's mixed feelings about this, but this is a former juvenile facility. It's 140 acres that's owned by the county. It's not in my district, obviously. It would obviously need a lot of improvements because we don't want people to feel like they're in jail and we don't want folks to be isolated. So we'd have to work with R T on access. But this could be a massive opportunity site for just this type of need. And there's pools and there's stables and there's just space for up to 500 beds right now. Um, that could really be a great opportunity site if we wanted to partner and do something innovative, especially with folks who might need a lot of extra support, um, to, to get and stable and, and stay safe and healthy. But we're never going to get out of this challenge if we don't drastically improve our affordable housing stock. And this is part of the reason why I pulled the earlier item. It's just not to, again, to say that the city staff and S H R A aren't doing Herculean efforts, because they are. But just to point out that we are way off track with how many extremely low income and low income units we need. So we've identified a whole host of strategies, um, to help bring property into affordability, something called the Community Opportunity to Purchase Act. I've been kind of an evangelist for this for a few years now, um, in our work with the Community Land Trust, because this is a policy that lets a property owner set a price, but then it lets the community groups meet that price. And if they can meet the price, it doesn't go to bid. It doesn't go into open market. That means a habitat, that means a community land trust, that means the tenants could actually try to buy their property and keep it affordable without having to compete with cash offers from other jurisdictions. And it could really help us move a lot of current housing stock into housing protections and affordability protections. But there are other things, right? Things that would build new housing potentially, like inclusionary zoning, um, really thinking about how we align streamlining, like through SB 35 to incentivize affordable housing. We're giving them a public good. Let's try to get a little bit more out of that when it comes to prices for housing. And then again, a lot of models that we're already doing, Sacramento Self-Help Housing already does master leasing of properties where they lease a house and then rent out the rooms and have leads onsite to really reduce barriers to folks when they're trying, especially to rebuild rental histories with evictions or other things that might have been going on. And then thinking about how we buy existing land and buildings. A lot of the lots that I've identified, a lot of those opportunity sites are private. Um, so in the end, we'd either need to lease it from a private entity or we'd need to find a way to buy that, um, and to bring that into public ownership so that we can use it. Because you can't build more land, as a developer friend of mine once said, you know, land is precious. And I really want to think about how we bring more of that land and keep it in public ownership so that we have those opportunity sites and can leverage them for more affordable housing. And then obviously, which we've talked about a lot, was city and other surplus lands. How do we really make sure we're using those for the biggest thing for our buck, which in my mind is as much and as affordable housing as possible? And then my, the last part of this part of the strategy here is prevention. How do we prevent people from getting onto the street in the first place? You know, there's, there's really not a lot of safety net out there. If there's a crisis, if you lose your job, if your car breaks down, if you have a fire, you can't make your deductible because it's COVID and who has savings right now? And, and I think we could really build off of what we've learned, working with S H R A and the emergency rent assistance programs, and really think about how do we make this stuff more permanent? Um, I've talked a lot to staff about code violations. You know, if you are a fixed income and you get in trouble where your roof is starting to go bad or your porch steps are going bad and you can't afford necessarily to make those repairs, you might sell your home or lose your home eventually because you don't have those resources to keep doing those improvements. So how do we create the resources and support and crisis intervention services so that people don't get to a crisis point that leads them to the streets and, and, and makes them end up on the street in the first place? Because that is the, the, and we're talking about harm reduction and reducing trauma and, and the likelihood that someone will be on the street a long time. That means prevention, um, of the problem in the first place. So this is a map of the sites that we've identified. There are some notable missing on here, like I didn't map the hotels, um, voucher sites or the affordable housing sites or public land, because all of that we're still assessing and don't really have tangible locations with. But I did want to show the green stars are sites that either were open or are open now. Yellow sites are public parcels that were Yellow sites are public parcels that we're looking at, specifically Caltrans parking lots underneath the freeways for potential lease um for tiny homes or other camping. And then the red stars are all private parcels. Um, these are parcels that we're going to have to negotiate with the nearby community and the property owner to bring into our use, but are opportunity sites that I really think are worth exploring. If we maximize all of the options that I've talked about, we think our plan could get close to twenty-five hundred spots for folks. Um, obviously, there's a lot of contingencies there, but um this is something that we hope really reflects a lot of feedback from the community and the surveys that we've conducted. So the next steps for our plan is obviously we need to keep vetting the sites. And I know we're on a quick timeline here, so I know we're all working as quickly as we can, but there are some more site vetting that needs to happen, also with city staff, especially with the private sites. You know, staff knows that I've sent them a few different ones and said, hey, can we buy this? What would that take? Hey, could we lease this? What would that take? And um I think really thinking about what that would look like and how, what resources we have available for that and how we would do that um would be really critical. And then once we hone in on our sites, I want timelines, I want metrics, you know, I want budgets so that we can start really talking about what this would cost and how we measure our success. Um, but I also want to really start thinking about those additional services. I had so many amazing ideas in my survey about employment opportunities, about things we could be doing to really help folks grow. And I also had a lot of folks on my survey who were like, how do I help? What do I do? Where do I go? Um, I posted that photo from Mustard Seed and had a bunch of folks message me and say, is Mustard Seed taking volunteers? Like, what can I do to help right now with this issue? And I think we really have a lot of power in our community that that I want to try to think about. How do we leverage that in a way that helps work with service providers and experts and unhoused folks and making these solutions real? So finally, I'm going to do, I mean, I guess as in my now usual fashion, because whenever I get the mic on these councils, I seem to do something a little out of the blue. And so I'm going to flip the script just a little bit, um, because I'm really proud of what we've done in District Four so far. We're not waiting on the plan to finish. We're not waiting on everything. Like, we jumped in headfirst in some cases um to, because we knew we needed the action now. We knew there was a crisis now, but our process, progress has unfortunately only illuminated just how much need is out there. Um, the two safe grounds that we established after almost a decade of community advocacy, and I have to say Herculean efforts of city staff um to stand up, and that has not gone unrecognized um and to make work and with all the community partnerships. These sites are almost full. And the calls are still coming in. They're coming in every single day. I'm getting a text or a phone or an email from somebody saying, is there room at Safe Ground? Can I come to Safe Ground? I will need a place to be. Can I please come? And it's just heartbreaking to churn people away, given that they're asking us for help and and I just don't have the room. We don't have the room at the sites any longer. So we need more sites, period. Um. And I think, you know, we all know the risks that are out there, and I can rattle off the names of Ray Torola and um and Karen Hunter and John Lane and all the folks that I know of who've died and all the folks that we know that have died, that whose names we don't know. Um, but really, in the end, we need to to do more as as quickly as we possibly can. So I want to call and kind of end my presentation with a request of my colleagues. Um, you know, I think we've learned a lot about how to do this and we need, we need more sites to open as soon as humanly possible. And I know Bridgette's got a lot of ideas for sites that could potentially be great candidates. And I know our community partners are ready and and looking for those places to refer folks. So I am asking if you all would join me in committing to open some safe sites in your district and and I'm also committing to help with that. You know, this isn't just me saying, hey, it's your turn. It's me saying, hey, can I help? Um, build off what we've started in District Four and and really see if we can open as many safe sites as as we possibly can. It's not a permanent solution, but what we've done for better or for worse with opening the first two sites is really open and unending need um in the community that I'd love to help solve and address as quickly as we can. So with that, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll stop my slides and um open it up for comment. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I, I want to just, once again, Councilmember Valenzuela, thank you for being first. And also to thank you for your thoughtfulness and the thoroughness of your presentation and the fact, you're right. We, and I said this from the beginning, and you have certainly followed it and you have led. We're not waiting for the passage of a master plan to actually get to work because the urgency is now. I wondered if you could go back to the screen, because I I would like to use your experience and your presentation maybe as a, as a guide and clarification for how we might proceed going forward. If you could go back to your slide on your timeline. You're on mute now.
Oh, sorry, ma'am. I was just going to say I'm not as good as staff at queuing this up on demand. Which slide?
Okay, it's the.
Sorry, did you want the timeline slide you said?
Yeah, the timeline slide, because I think that's where I want to, I want to have a little bit of a dialogue about here.
Sorry, I don't think I had a timeline slide. Are you thinking the map slide?
I thought it said timeline, next steps, next steps.
Next steps. There we go. Thank you. I got you. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes. Okay, so you have been working hard and you've identified twenty-five hundred potential beds, roofs and spaces. And so as you look at the creation of the timelines, let's just take that for a moment. I knew I saw the word timeline in there. What do you think is a timeline for how many beds, roofs and spaces? Uh, even e- even incrementally, and how long it might take you to get to the full twenty-five hundred? And I'm, I'm asking you not to press you, but I think that because I think we're all doing this together, right? As a city council and as a city. And, you know, I'm, I'm pushing for this big vote in June, but as I, as I am thinking about your presentation, it actually could be a series of votes because you may have a thousand beds, uh, roofs and or spaces by the June timeline, but it may take you another X number of months to perfect the negotiations with private property owners or to deal with other regulatory issues. So what's in your head here in terms of how you look at the timeline for the sites you have presented?
Yeah, the triage sites, I think we're figuring out, um, we could stand up pretty quickly. So Safe Ground, and I'm sure Bridgette will like me saying this, but I mean, it really took a couple of weeks um to stand that up once we knew and and um how to do it. The tiny home sites, the triage and like the more transitional housing, I think the earliest would be the end of this year because um we need to work out the lease agreements and the work for that. Um, so I think that's more of like a, like a six to twelve month earliest. Uh, and the affordable housing stuff obviously is is the hardest to crack, um, because you have to preserve and build and and that just takes a long time. But I think, you know, the first, we could do five. I mean, if, if everything works, so let's just pretend that all the sites are great and that leasing is not a problem and we get all the resources we need to buy and everyone's just super enthused. Um, the five hundred triage sites could be open within the next three to six months. And the tiny home sites could be opened up in the next year.
And how many, how many, how many beds uh within the tiny home strategy?
Uh, the tiny home strategy had, here, I'll pull that up here. Um, and then the El Camino, West El Camino lots um are the biggest. Uh, so those are, could potentially, since there's six acres, house up to a thousand if it all works out. But there's about fifteen hundred here for tiny homes. Um, again, if all goes right.
So you could get, so just for approximation, I'm not holding you to strict timelines, but it gives us a sense of also what we want to do citywide here. You and your district can probably get at least five hundred people out of tent encampments into safe ground uh over the next two months or so. Fair?
A lot of things would have to go right, Mayor, but yes.
Okay, okay, we'll give you, we'll give you a little flexibility there. But then on the, on the tiny home strategy, which I think is a key element of everything that we want to do because it's a roof and it's, and it's dignity and safety, and yet it's relatively inexpensive and can be, yes, transitional housing, but for a relatively long time. Um, you say fifteen hundred over the course of the next six to twelve months. Fair? If you had the read.
Again, if everything goes right, fair.
Everything goes right. Okay, I, I think that's, we're not holding you any of it. I do think it's helpful to see how you're approaching this because we, we have urgency. I mean, today, the County of Sacramento gave, thanks to leadership of Phil Cerna, gave direction to its uh county executive to not shut the Project Room Key uh motels, at least through uh the month of August. And we are, you know, as I said, working with the county and through our two-by-two and and the city manager and the county executive and a lot of member-to-member, uh, and we're building something here. Um, and so the idea is here over incremental periods of time to build as much capacity as we can and then to plan for additional capacity six to twelve months from now. Or we don't expect it's all going to be built in a in a day or even a couple of months, but we're trying to get to thousands so that we can so that we can both help people and also say, frankly, this is me, and it may not be others, say that there are areas where people cannot camp, um, if we're providing a safe place for people to go. And it, it's that combination that is going to be the ch- game changer for us and provide the relief that we all want to provide. So thank you. Um, that was my main question, just to get an idea of how you were thinking about next steps in the timelines. Do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I wanted to say a couple of things if I could also.
Yeah, of course. Go ahead. Let's, let's hear from the, go, go.
No, I just want to thank uh Katie, I, I, you've set a high bar, number one, which is good because we all need to strive to reach that.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll certainly take you up on your offer of working with you. I think this has to be a collaborative and a collective effort. And we can certainly learn from each other as you go. I think what's, what's most impressive to me and and the discussions that I'd like to have uh offline is so much of what you're doing is applicable to others, right? So this is not just a District Four specific piece of work. It really is much broader, which is I know what you set out to do, and I think you've accomplished that. Um, so I, I'm looking forward to it as, you know, we're, we're, my office is kind of past the brunt of Aggie Square and now into homelessness. We have a meeting tomorrow night um in our district to talk about this. We're, we're going at it a little bit differently, but you know, our hope is to have four to six sites in addition to um, the WX Shelter and and a couple of other contracts that are in our district now. So I just want to say congratulations and and you know, to all of the people on your list who you've worked with uh to say thank you to them. I think that's an important piece of work, so.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. And honestly, this wouldn't, my biggest lesson learned is that it is not possible for us to do this without the help of these stakeholders and especially the service providers um that helped with Safe Ground, so thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Vang.
Yeah, I'll make my comments short. I just really wanted to say congratulations. Uh, Katie, thank you so much for your bravery going first. And like Councilmember Cheniere says, setting the bar really high for all of us. Um, and I, I definitely, you know, would echo his sentiment when he said that the plan that you're presenting could be a plan for all of our district, right? Um, and that we have to do something, that doing nothing is not an option, because we know, I mean, in my district in particular, we have encampments. And how are we ensuring that we have safe grounds, safe spaces for folks to go to? Um, I'm still in community conversation with my uh, with my district. Um, we've had several meetings. I've had meetings um also with the women at the shelter, the navigation center. Um, we still have a lot of work ahead, but I definitely take your offer on working closely with you too. I think you have an incredible model. You've laid the groundwork for all of us um and really look forward to working closely with you as well. I just want to say thank you and I'm definitely have my commitment that we got to do everything we can to get people sheltered and get them in and have, ensure that they have a safe place even, even to camp, right? Um, safety is a top priority. And so just want to say congratulations and thank you for being bold and courageous and being the first to go. Um, and I'm just, I'm really proud of you, so.
I have Councilmember Getta, then Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say thanks uh to uh Councilmember Valenzuela and to her chief of staff, Michelle Parissett, who helped us early on, gave us some good advice and 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 also some Frank, like, hey, this is where we uh, we, we uh made some missteps and don't make those mistakes early on. And that helped us definitely get um, get our, our, our meetings going to a good start because we were concerned about some of the, the, how, how do, how to get people with different points of view to to talk together uh on this issue. So I do want to personally thank you for that because it's helped us drive the conversation. Uh, and also to uh, to show that, show proof of concept on the safe grounds uh as well, that it, it, it can be done in a different way. Uh, and so, and I think that's helped our district a lot in, in looking at that aspect. Uh, and to your challenge, yes, we uh, we take it up because we already opened up a uh our warming center and safe parking and the, and our, and that, and that uh church is willing to do that again. And they recruited a second church, a neighboring church too. So who wants to do that? So I think, I want to just say thank you for uh, for your leadership and helping us on, over in District Six.
Thank you. I now have Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Katie, thanks for the presentation. Uh, you know, none of this happens without our capable staff. I think you're aware of that. We may toss out these ideas, but our staff are the ones who get it done and also the service providers who uh provide the services to the homeless folks. You know, uh, this isn't reinventing the wheel. We have made many uh efforts to house homeless and we have done a great job. For instance, we housed twenty-seven hundred people last year. Uh, we've had tremendous successes. It's really about the numbers out there. So now we're pivoting to Safe Ground. I think that that's a really good idea. And I'm glad that uh WX is coming into play and that council members maybe will feel a little more comfortable finding sites in their own districts. But I just had to give a shout out to the people who've been doing this work for many years, like, say, Leo McFarland and VOA, who've been at this for forty years. Uh, you know, we know what works. We just have to do a lot more of it. So thanks for your effort in that regard.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, great job, uh, Councilwoman Valenzuela, to you, your staff and to your constituents as well. You obviously have been talking to your constituents and have allowed them to be a part of strategizing and bringing this kind of great plan to us. I took pictures of every single slide that you put up because you did put up a high bar for all the rest of us. And I'm looking forward to working with you to strategize with you on what we can do together, where our districts meet and also to try to emulate some of the great things that you've done. So I just want to again, say, hey, great job. Really proud of the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I have Mayor Pro Tameishby.
Wait, can we just talk about Tawana for a minute, though? Almost didn't make it through the presentation, Councilmember Valenzuela. Jeez. Feel so bad. We had her on hold for that present, whole presentation to get to your presentation and now. But I want to thank her for sharing her story with us and her experience. That's what we're here for. And I'm so glad you brought her, Councilmember Valenzuela, to have her voice really be the leadoff because you're going first, but you put her first. And I think that's very symbolic of who you are and who I hope we are all aspiring to be in this whole effort, right? The solution's not going to look the same in every corner of the city and it's not going to look the same for Tawana as it does for somebody else. It's, it's different and it's tailored. And I love that you took the time to make that really clear. Not every, there's no panacea to this. There's there's things that work for some people and other things that work for other people. As many of them as we can get to help as many folks as possible has to be the goal. And I also really appreciate, Councilmember Valenzuela, your support of Bridget Dean and staff. You, you uh I think you have learned so quickly to value people like Bridget and and really weave it in to everything that you do. And it makes me feel really good when you're presenting to hear you valuing her so highly because I, I know she works really hard and I know you do too, and that feels so good. So thank you for lifting her up. Great job with your presentation. You deserve all. So thank you for lifting her up, great job with your presentation, you deserve all the kudos in the world.
Very good, thank you. We do have public testimony, um, and how many people do we have on the line, Madam Clerk?
I have fourteen callers, did Councilmember Jennings have comments?
He just spoke.
Thank you. I have fourteen callers, are you ready for our callers?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, may I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, I firstly want to thank, uh, Councilmember Katie Valenzuela, that was a great presentation. I really did enjoy it and I'm fully on board with everything that you are attempting to do in the city. I live in, uh, D four and I have for the last decade. Um, so I'm very familiar with the homelessness issue and have never dealt with it to the extent that I have now in my current move to Twenty Second and W, where there was a former homeless encampment there. My concern is the, you can't really speak to homelessness without intertwining drug and drug addiction. And my concern really at the base of it is those who refuse to create a safe space for those that really are wanting to get better and wanting to excel. And those who do refuse will remain on the streets, uh, continuing to sell drugs, do drugs, and then making it very miserable for the residents that live in the very close areas. I know myself, I've lived on Twenty Second, uh, and W for only not even a couple of weeks and I've already had somebody break into my residence. I've had people filter water, which is not an issue in my, um, in my experience. But what I'm saying is that you, for that to occur, you do need to account for those outliers, which will not be a part of that program. And will only create havoc on those who really are trying to help and those who want help. You can't help those who don't want to help themselves. And that's my only concern regarding this entire initiative, uh, are those individuals who, you know, out of my daily walks, I see needles on the grass. And it's, it's not very fun for those who live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Travis Silcox and I serve as the Boulevard Park Neighborhood Association Representative to Councilmember Valenzuela's D four homelessness task force. First, I'd like to commend the councilmember and her staff for an exemplary process of soliciting input on this vital issue. The number of representatives at her many, many task force meetings has been twenty-three to thirty-two people. Each one of us has a constituency that we communicate with. The councilmember also held a well-attended public meeting briefing residents and surveying them for suggestions and input. Her sighting report delivered tonight reflects this rigorous process. Now, we will all be watching the subsequent city council meetings to see the rollout of safe grounds and shelters throughout the city. I urge the mayor to establish a process whereby these safe ground sites are opened sequentially in a fair manner so that no one district takes on an undue burden. My neighborhood association also finds it imperative that the city continues to hold the county and neighboring cities and counties accountable to do their fair share. Solving homelessness needs to be a citywide and a regional effort, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, this is Nikki Pascal, I'm a resident in Midtown in Council District Four. Um, first, I wanted to thank my councilmember Valenzuela for her leadership on the issue of bringing dignity to unhoused people in our community. I'm really proud that our district has shown that we can open these safe ground areas and do it relatively quickly. Um, clearly, this is just one step in connecting our neighbors with permanent housing solutions, but I think it's really meaningful to start rebuilding, uh, the trust that was discussed tonight and treating people as human beings regardless of their living situation. Um, I'm really excited by the ideas that Councilmember Valenzuela presented tonight and hope to see those move forward and importantly, to see them developed at scale. Um, I see those tiny house communities and, um, I, um, think they'd be really welcome in my neighborhood and I hope in other parts of the city. Um, the devastation of homelessness is not, um, exclusive to Midtown and, um, it's really incumbent on all of our parts of the city to be part of the solution. And so I just, uh, would urge each of the councilmembers to take up Councilmember Valenzuela's challenge and, um, open some safe ground spaces for each, people to live in each district right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, everybody, this is Joe Smith, the advocacy director for Loaves and Fishes. And I've had the honor of being part of the task force since the very first meeting. And, uh, you know, that was an amazing presentation. And, and even though I've been part of every meeting and, and seen this all roll out, I didn't realize the totality of all the work that all these folks have put in, um, with Councilmember Valenzuela's organizing effort, um, until I saw it tonight on the screen. And, uh, I just want to say that it's been a, an awesome learning experience for everybody, I think. And to have in one room together, not just to consult or listen in, but actually participate in a plan with, with folks from, you've, you've got activists, you've got the P bits, you've got the neighborhood associations, you've got the amazing Tawana, uh, calling from her tent, um, in her encampment. It's just been a, an incredible experience and, uh, we're really, really excited to hear how the other council districts, um, come together and, uh, build plans of their own in cooperation with everybody else. It's, it's really going to be a big team effort and, uh, I got to say, I'm really proud to have been, uh, a part of the District Four Task Force, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, everyone, it's Rose from District Six. And I had to call in just to commend Councilmember Valenzuela for her work and ingenuity in this process. Her presentation was super refreshing and I'm so proud of everything she's been able to accomplish in, in such a short time, really, if we think about it. She's, uh, one of the newer council members, so it's pretty amazing and I am very impressed. Um, I was part of some of the groups that helped canvas under the freeway and actually talked to the residents who, and asked them what they need. And so I think that's a really key part for the other city council districts to take away is to make, um, help include the people who are actually unhoused on our streets, to include them in the process. And the fact that we had, um, a resident today on the phone, um, calling was amazing. Um, I love to see those voices at the table. Um, I just want to do a really quick shout out to District Six and Councilmember Getta. I know you're working on some things, I would like to see you, um, reach this bar that Councilmember Valenzuela has set for us and, um, to make the similar, um, thing happen here in Council, uh, District Six and as quickly as possible, as everyone knows, it's going to be real hot soon and, um, we need to make sure people have safe places to stay. So kudos, kudos, kudos to Councilmember Valenzuela and I look forward to seeing what the rest of the council does, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hey, I'm Chris, lived in District Six for nearly fifty years. I need to say, I really appreciated the time and effort Ms. Valenzuela put into her presentation. It's clear that she is taking this issue seriously and making a concerted effort to address it. I'm honestly frustrated in many councilmembers, including my own, and the utter lack of any actual effort to preemptively identify locations for safe ground in their districts. I have friends in D four, they're happy to see the safe ground and know that homeless folks have a safe place to live and access services and hopefully move on to actual housing. But they are also taking notice that no other councilmembers are taking this issue seriously currently. We need safe grounds for homeless folks everywhere, not just in District Four. We need them in District Six and across the city. We need genuine buy-in and not promises with zero substance. Your constituents are asking that you do something. I've seen them online on platforms like Nextdoor where they're frustrated at the poor treatment of homeless folks. I can, we need to see you act, we need to see you genuinely engage and locate properties that can be used, multiple properties across each of your districts. District Four cannot house all of our homeless folks and many homeless folks are homeless in the community they called home before. So it's utterly ridiculous to expect them to move away from the communities and areas they know. I, along with your constituents across the city, are begging you to take this seriously. Lip service isn't enough, it never has been, and we're watching to see if you do anything. And we're actually seeing active progress in one council district and it falling flat in others. And it shows how seriously you take our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, um, I'd first like to say thank you, um, Councilmember Valenzuela for your work. Um, not only for doing the real work and, and really getting those numbers together, but also making it so digestible for people who are calling in and not necessarily involved in the political sphere of things. So thank you for making this so, um, hopeful and, and just digest, digestible. And I also want to take the minute to thank my councilmember, my Vang, for committing to working these efforts into our area. My heart is in South Sac, um, and so I'm really excited to hear that you, um, will be making the necessary steps to address homelessness in that area, especially as our residents move closer and closer to, um, uh, creating camps on the freeway and just in very, um, heartbreaking situations. So thank you all so much for your work, um, really happy to be represented, uh, by such amazing advocates.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Sean Wright and I'm with the Alcoa and Magic Rapids Neighborhood Association. I'm also a member of the District Four Homeless Task Force. For many decades, I've had to oppose over-concentration homeless services in the River District, Alcoa Rapids and the Central City. I'm happy to see the city decentralize and expanding homeless services throughout the entire city. Currently, the Central City, river to river, freeway to freeway, has eight-hundred-plus shelter beds and then services, uh, a thousand of the unhoused daily. That would be in District Three, District Four and a little bit of District Five. Under redistricting, if the Central City becomes one district, once again, services would be overly concentrated. Please look at distributing services by geographic area and not just council district. Uh, you know, you really do need to reach everybody throughout the area, uh, in the city. During the last homeless count, there were six-thousand persons counted on the street. Ninety-three percent of those were pink on the Sacramento area. The Sacramento area consists of four-plus counties and sixty-plus states. As you formulate this plan, the entire Sacramento area must be included. Uh, the city's success in housing thousands of individuals will fail in removing thousands of homeless on the street. If you do not include the other cities to, in the region to help solve the problem, they will continue to backfill, the region will continue to backfill, uh, the city's, uh, resolutions and therefore not giving the city what, uh, it needs. Uh, if you, the best way to illustrate this, the city of Sacramento is like the regional airport of homelessness and the Central City is basically Terminal A. The city of Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
Sure, the city of Sacramento can't do it all, but all of us in the region must do something.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hi, I'm calling as a resident of District Four and, uh, really just want to express how profoundly proud I am to have, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela as my representative on this council. She really has, as many of you noted, set the bar high and it's, uh, truly, truly refreshing to see after so long of a council that just refused to listen to the vast majority of its public, uh, especially when we come into these spaces. It actually makes me, gives me hope, uh, that's like, that change is possible, that we can actually get representatives that are there for the people, as was noted by, uh, uh, Councilmember Ashby. And it really shows in just how this councilmember continues to actually be on the street, not just like sitting in an office making phone calls, but actually at the meetings, actually doing the surveys of homelessness and campaigns, working in the, the warning centers and shelters and such. It's, it's truly amazing and I'm wondering, when are, like, when are you all going to be inspired to do the same? I know some of you are, I meant like, especially you, uh, Councilmember Vang. Uh, I, and, and I really think that all of you have the potential to actually meet the bar that Katie has set for you all. And you should, like, let's not be petty about like how much work she's done. Of course, staff has done great work, so has she. And all, like, it's a team effort, it's a community effort. So where are, like, where are you all at? Because I've heard from some of you that you're, you're making progress, you need a little more time, which is totally understandable, but what about those of you that didn't even report? I didn't hear a report from Jeff Harris, I didn't hear a report from Angelique Ashby. I'm really wondering, like, where are you all at on these things? And like, how are you going to meet the bar? She isn't just.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, I will wrap up really quickly to say, the challenge is yours.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please?
Mindy, if I may, Madam Clerk, not responding at all defensively to the caller, I, I get the passion, but I just, for information purposes, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, um, volunteered to her great credit to go first. And you're darn right, she set a high bar, but don't presume uh, anything negative about her colleagues here because we are setting, uh, the agenda for each of the districts going forward over the next couple of weeks. So this is the first of eight presentations under this auspices of this master plan. And, and so, hold on here, we're, we're going big. We're going to go big, citywide, go ahead.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, good evening, my name's Courtney Hanson, I live in District Three. Um, so Councilmember Harris and everyone on the council, I would love to end this evening hearing some concrete commitments to continue moving this wonderful project forward. And thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for your leadership on the issue. And Tawana, I don't know if you're listening, but man, I just have to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for your participation in this conversation. And I myself have been working with people impacted by, um, poverty, homelessness, incarceration for a decade. And I just want to uplift that people who are directly impacted don't just have personal stories to share, they have analysis to share, they have strategy ideas to share. So when Tawana talked about, and just if you're listening, Tawana sending you lots of love and light for the trauma that you shared tonight with us, um, which should inform our solutions. But Tawana was talking about how we continue to make this successful, how we get buy-in, how we create community within these safe ground locations. And so it's not just storytelling or experience, but analysis and strategy. And I just can't say enough in like a non-tokenizing way that it's so important to have people at the center of the table leading the solutions who are directly experiencing the problems. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it's a thousand or two thousand or, we have a lot of places where this could be happening and I don't see any reason to not be doing it, um, with all of these hands on deck together. And so I also just want to say, I think at the city and county level and in light of the verdict today, I don't know, maybe nationally, it is time to get to the root of our problems. And I work with an organization called Decarcerate Sacramento and we've helped convince the county twice now, three times now.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
Solve their problems, and so I encourage you to keep going in this direction. Yes, absolutely, so please make some more concrete commitments tonight because this is the direction we need to be going. need to be going in, and thank you, Councilmember Valen...
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Uh, this, my name is Rick Eaton, and I'm a volunteer with Sacramento Area Congregations Together. I want to echo the thanks that's been directed at the mayor and the, the accolades to Councilmember Valenzuela for the excellent presentation and the obvious, very hard, thoughtful work that's gone into this. Um, I particularly want to point out a couple of things. Uh, the council member started her presentation with a statement that our mindset needs to be that homelessness is not acceptable. And I think one of the takeaways for all of us should be, when we look at her numbers, is that this is a doable effort. We can end homelessness in our region if we follow this template and coordinate. The numbers work, the sites are available, uh, and the public support is there if we follow a process that's thoughtful and transparent and open the way that, um, the council member has done. So we look forward to seeing equally compelling presentations and plans from all the other districts, and together with all the various constellations of organizations and leaders , uh, working on this issue, um, really, really making serious progress towards our goal of ending homelessness in our region. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
I thank you.
Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Rebecca, and I am the Assistant Director of Outreach at St. John's Lutheran Church in Midtown, representing the faith community, which is oftentimes an unofficial partner in meeting the needs of the, of our unhoused neighbors. Um, and I was also a part of the District Four Task Force. Um, I am calling, one, to expect, especially deep gratitude for Councilmember Valenzuela and the difficult work that she and so many others have been doing. Um, and I want to highlight just a few things. Um, one is the importance that, um, the importance of working with people with lived experience like Twana and others, and also advocates and service providers that have trusted relationships with folks who are living on the street, um, that can be used to better understand their experience and build relationships, um, with, uh, moving into different spaces. Um, I also want to highlight the predominance of private spaces for people that is in Councilmember Valenzuela's plan, um, for people who have been living out in public for a long time. It's really important that people have spaces that go to where they can just be as they need to be, um, without the eyes of others looking on them, without being in a congregate space, um, and so, excuse me. So I think that's a really important piece of this plan as well. Um, and I also hope that other council members that are developing their plans, listen to Twana, and as we, we build all of these spaces in all of the, the districts, that we listen to Twana's recommendation that our unhoused neighbors be involved in building these safe spaces, whether it's, like, physically building these structures, or it's building the community that supports, um, the safety of individuals in each of these different spaces, um, that their wisdom, um, from their lived experience is absolutely invaluable. Um, so thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'm done. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Maureen Fitzgerald, and Councilmember Jennings is my council member. I'm calling with a process comment. I really think going forward, it would be very helpful to have each district's proposed sites and rationale and all that pertains to what their plan is put up in the agenda before the meeting. Trying to read this and follow it and figure it out is tough, and it's okay for the first one, but for the future, I think each should be in the agenda packet so that we can look at it over ahead of time. Other than that, I'm hopeful for what this whole process may lead to improving the lives of people who don't have shelter and also for the people around them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And this is our final caller on this item. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, Richard Wake, City Council, District Five. I just want to, uh, first thing I want to say is I agree with the one caller from City Council, District Six, and the, and another gentleman from City Council, District Four, about seeing the lack of, uh, of resolve on getting some sites done. I totally agree, uh, with those people's assessment. Uh, having said that, though, in regards to what I guess I'm hearing tonight as a sense of urgency, as you all know, we have a very serious problem down in Southland Park on Riverside Boulevard. Um, uh, the levee project is going on, and I was walking down there on Saturday, and the fencing has been put up around the, around the entrance to the bike trail where a lot of vehicles were parked. There's still the issue of the motorhome and several other vehicles that are parked down there. However, the levee project is gonna be, uh, moving forward quite rapidly now, and then the homeless encampment is still, uh, north of the entrance to the bike trail on, uh, on the Sacramento River, on the levee. Uh, you know, Councilmember Chenier did help us get some trashcans up there and is getting, uh, trash pickup scheduled, but look, you know, I don't know where the vehicles were referred to or if anybody, uh, you know, got those people into safe ground parking or anything like that. What's gonna happen is if these people aren't found a spot pretty quickly for safe ground camping, they are going to be spread out all over the city. And I don't know how much Councilmember Ashby has looked into this, but that includes women that are up there on the levee, because I see them walking up and down Thirty-Fifth Avenue all the time. So, you know, you guys need to hurry up and get something done out there. The, uh, you know, the problem is getting worse, the business people are tired of all the problems. Uh, the manager at Riverfront Apartments has noted on several occasions about, uh, increases in crime. You know, we all want compassionate, sensitive, thoughtful issues, but you guys need to find a spot for the people.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, a spot needs to be found, immediately found, for the people of the encampment up on the levee.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, um, you get the last word here, uh, on the item. And again, gratitude for helping us get off to a really strong start here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and yeah, I appreciate that, and I just want to reiterate so much of what happened tonight was not my own, um, you know, not just Bridget Dean and Daniel Foster and LaChelle Dozier, who all looked at the plan and gave input, the public work staff, who was literally out at 5:00 PM on a Friday, I believe, installing signs and doing things so that Safe Ground could open in time. I mean, so many people at the city who really helped, and the task force members who just sat on the phone for three and a half hours to make comments after I put them through over almost a dozen meetings at this plane and more to come. But, um, you know, I also really want to recognize the service providers and, and just all the hard work, and Twana, who's still listening, and I see on the Zoom, who I just am so grateful for. But I do want to say that I recognize the work, the beauty and the challenge of this challenge you've given us, Mayor, of the master siding plan, and why I'm so enthusiastic about it is, is the siding part, it is the hardest question that we have to answer, is that net that is hard to crack, there is no site that somebody isn't gonna have a problem with. There is, as I've learned, there is no place, I've lost a lot of friends and supporters over the work we've done so far, who are frustrated with what we're doing, and, and gain some who were excited. It's just, this is the hardest part, and I do see my colleagues struggling through it and then trying to figure out what this looks like in their districts, and, and I'm excited to support you in, in the presentations to come. Um, I do take ownership over the fact that the staff report was slim, my staff was trying to get me to put more in it, and I just couldn't get it done in time. Um, but, so we will get better at this, I promise, but I, I am encouraged by the conversations I've had with a lot of my colleagues who I know are really working hard, um, to try to figure this out in their own districts and see what makes sense for the community where they're at, and, and I'm just really excited for the work over these next couple months. It's gonna be a sprint. Mayor, you've not set a low bar for us, which I appreciate in a lot of respects, because getting this done by June will be hard, but this is, this is the necessary work that I think we've been needing, and that's why you're seeing momentum, is because I think we, we all feel that urgency and the need to, to get it done. So thank you, Mayor, um, for giving me the space, for letting me go first, um, so that I could get it out of the way and now get to sit back and watch my colleagues do theirs, not kidding. Um, but I'm really looking forward to the continued discussion and engagement in the community on this, so thank you.
That is great. Thank you again. Um, all right, um, that's the end of the agenda. Um, is there public testimony on items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have two callers for items not on the agenda, and I have board and commission appointments to read to the record to the Sacramento Youth Commission, Isabel Pekewin Kim and Serena Rai.
Very good, thank you. Let's hear from the two, uh, members of the public.
Thank you, ma'am. My first caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Oh, hi. My name is Patricia Smith. I'm from, um, District Two. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, say thank you for, um, uh, thank you to the mayor and the city council. Um, thank you guys for making Sacramento, um, a beautiful case in place, or working on the plans to make us, you know, getting the homeless off the street. Um, and I also have a plan for the homeless too, that I will be reaching out to, um, Council, um, Lolita, to, um, help in our district, um, you know, to raise the bar like, uh, Katie, um, is saying on the, on the line. Um, and, uh, for the lady that, um, gave the comment about, um, you know, the, um, sex trafficking and things like that, um, prayers up and, you know, uh, for her and making it, uh, uh, better in her life too. Um, but, uh, today, I would just want to, uh, you know, put on the record, uh, you know, I'm Patricia Smith, um, very, uh, well-known in the Del Paso Heights area, um, uh, back-to-school programs, etiquette, uh, um, stop the violence, uh, sewing, um, and raising, uh, uh, kids and generations in the Del Paso Heights area. And I'm noticing, uh, on the agenda tonight that it's mostly about the homelessness and, um, you know, other things, but one thing that I don't see on the agenda is, uh, criminal justice reform and what we could do in our community in order to educate the community or, or youth about, uh, their constitutional rights of, you know, living in the city or the neighborhoods that we're, we're living in. And, you know, I'm raised from the, or raised in the hood, and I know that there's a lot of youth in the past that has been, um, incarcerated and, um...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I would like to propose that we have a criminal justice, uh, connection with our community, uh, to the judicial system in order to help our youth.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please.
Hi, Mr. Davis.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes, and, and I'm making, I'm sending several shouts out tonight. First, I want to start, I want the mayor and the city council to really pay attention to this tonight. The millennials are on the move again. Last weekend, they, uh, served our cheesecake at some event, and they have mentioned to me in writing today that it has gone viral on Instagram. Now, as a baby boom, I'm learning as I go. So, but it's, it's a wonderful thing the millennials are doing. I also would like to send a shout-out to City Councilman Lololi, because there's a staff member that has been in contact with me, I'm not gonna mention his name, because you're probably aware of who he is. He's doing a wonderful job of how to deal with someone like me that's very sincere. This is a family-owned cheesecake business, that's all I hear at City Hall, they want to help family businesses. Well, here we go. The other thing I want to do is, is, uh, give compliment to, um, the Sacramento Bee. The Sacramento Bee Board has written two articles lately. One was on the injustice at, in city manager's office as far as struggling to, to get money to underserved communities. And then this Sunday, they did a story on Mahalo Mada, the Grand High School Pacers being the winningest team in victories in Sacramento history. And that's wonderful, because that shows that the background I come from, I come from a background of trying to win, not at all costs, but when it's time to win under struggle, we know how to get it done in Del Paso Heights. So my focus now is the millennials are with me now. We got a lot of people that's pulling for us, and that hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars should be in that, those coffers of City Hall. And so it's time to fund that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. Fun to the Bay and Back Cheesecakes, and shout-out to the millennials.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you very much. Are there council ideas and questions? I see Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've long puzzled about the way the council, uh, directs our staff to allocate resources to various projects that we suggest, and so I have an ask of the city manager. Uh, Howard, I'd like you to work with, uh, charter officers and return to council with the recommendation, excuse me, for a governance process by which direction is given to charter officers and OPSA on various council initiatives to best streamline completion of items and streamline the use of staff and city resources. And, uh, we could perhaps, um, involve LaChelle and SHRA in this as well, but I think that there's a better process by which we can ask for things, rather than toss it out like I am now at the end of a long meeting, and, uh, put them all on a log, bring them back to the council so that the council can then collectively direct our staff on the projects that we want to further. And in this way, council members won't have to go it alone. Uh, you know, I could give you numerous examples. One, one that just came up recently, when, when Katie pulled a, uh, a consent item and wanted to direct our, our treasurer to invest in different portfolio items. A great idea, but that's not the way to do it. The way to do it is to have a log that we put these things on, bring it to council, and that way we don't haggle. So, Mr. Manager, that's my ask. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to announce an event happening in my district on Saturday to honor the life of Al Rojas, a longtime labor leader and community leader here in Sacramento. Um, his family has organized a celebration that will start on Saturday at 11:00 AM. Uh, they're gonna be marching from Nineteenth and T Street to Southside Park, and, and I hope folks will join us out there to celebrate a really legendary individual, um, and his family in our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Geta.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, you know, I wanted to, one, thank our, uh, our permit office and, and staff, city staff, and, uh, also specifically Alejandro Cabrera in my office for, uh, putting in extra work and helping the Rojas family, Desiree Rojas, and, and getting the process going for, um, the, this event. As Councilmember Valenzuela mentioned, you know, he was a longtime labor leader. I, I, I met him, uh, when I first moved to Sacramento, and tirelessly every year, he would organize so many of us, um, and so, uh, it's, uh, I want to just thank the staff for also helping us, uh, manage the, 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 a little bit of what the county side as well, uh, on that. So, uh, and then, uh, also wanted to, uh, thank, uh, you know, uh, the Latino Economic Council and the Council General Mexico for, uh, the, the drive-through, uh, the drive-through vaccination site we're gonna be doing, targeting, uh, the, uh, the Spanish-speaking Latino population. Uh, and, uh, and, you know, there's a recent report that came out last week that's, uh, said that eleven, the Latinos are eleven percent more likely to die of COVID-19, and so getting, uh, the efforts to increase the vaccination numbers amongst the zip codes and demographic is, is critical, so I want to thank for that effort. Uh, we're gonna be, uh, doing it, uh, through the drive-through area of the, of the, the old Arco Arena, I guess I... I forget, Sleep Train Theater area, I know it is Arco, but with that, again, and thank Alejandro for that, for that, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have.
All right. Well, Mayor Portemashby, go, go.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to, first of all, thank Councilmember Valenzuela for her work in getting the permit for Al's family, iconic family in Sacramento. Great job to everyone celebrating all of his contributions. Also wanted to thank Karina Talamontas in my office, who's been working with the consulate for the last couple of weeks to help them understand how to do a drive-through vaccination site, much like the very successful one that we are co-hosting with Councilmember Harris in his district, Anatomas High, and in case you missed it, I know Councilmember Harris knows this, but just an epic event this last Saturday in his district at Anatomas High. They, five thousand folks came through, families, it was a family vaccination effort hosted by Anatomas and the city, and just really great work, and Karina Talamontas out of my office continues to just be an amazing champion for getting this vaccination, getting those shots in the arms of a diverse population across this region, and I am very proud of her. I know Councilmember Vane is doing similarly amazing work. We're gonna start at those outside edges, Councilmember Vane, we're just gonna push in till we get the whole city, right? Congratulations to you and your team, and I just want to thank Karina publicly, she's doing a wonderful job.
Very good. Thank you all for a very productive meeting today. Thank you to the public, thank you to the city staff, everybody who, we're moving in the right direction, and a great relief today, obviously, with the, with the verdict out of Minneapolis. Peace, justice, we move forward. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.